You'll notice. So many of these are consent agenda items, so those are either agreements that have been signed or positions that have been filled and finalized between the time that the agenda was posted and today's meeting. So we'll walk through each of those in the in as I walk through the consent agenda and then also the world's best workforce presentation that will be shared today is also uploaded into the agenda.
Okay, looking for approval of agenda.
Make that motion.
Motion from Bruce.
A second.
Second Cheryl. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye, opposed say no. Carry. Public comment.
I did not receive anything.
Be on the list for a public comment. Move on to consent agenda.
Okay, um, do you want Cheryl, do you want to go over the bills and stuff first or do you want me to get into the personnel items?
Uh, doesn't matter. I I could just as well go ahead with the bills. I went in and looked through them today. I didn't see anything out of the ordinary. Everything was business as usual. It was actually a shortlist because we haven't been that long since our last meetings. Yeah, I would approve them.
One of the things that I do want to highlight for you is a note of appreciation that we received from Caitlin Gilk. So Caitlin did, ooh, we're gonna be upside down here, but there is a note that's there to represent just a thank you. So it's a pretty cool process that Caitlin has embarked on with Girl Scouts and what she did is she put one of the the defibrillators over by our baseball stadium and so her note is of thanks for doing that, but it's I I really think it's appropriate for us to say thank you for her for that service to our community. So that was pretty cool. A couple of other things that from the consent agenda personnel pieces. You'll notice a few retirement resignations in there and retirements and you'll notice a couple of so positions that are essentially kind of fills of retirement. One of the things that I do want to highlight for you, thank you so much. One of the things I do want to highlight for you is when you look at Lynn Bierman and Katie Welly. So when when Deb retired as the head cook, what we did is we did an analysis throughout the food service program and took a look at what was the need for a essentially a lead head cook or do how can we distribute those those roles and responsibilities a little bit differently? And so what the way that that structure is moving forward and we're gonna try to look for the rest of this year and see how that it that it does indeed work as we're envisioning that it will is that essentially our Lori, our our head food service person will kind of oversee the processes at both sites. And the purpose there was to really have an understanding of kind of the big picture of what's happening in each in each area. And then when she'll rotate between the two as the head cook. Then on the days that she's not at one of the other sites, then these individuals will fill in as the head cook to be able to make some of those critical decisions that need to happen. So I just wanted to share that out because that looks a little bit different than it has and that's that's why those are identified differently. And then to the community and pay scale, one of the other pieces I wanted to highlight there is that that pay scale hasn't been reviewed since December 1st of 2020. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention as well. And then the the range for that scale is thirteen ninety to fourteen seventy-four. So just wanted to highlight those items.
Looking for a motion to approve consent agenda.
I think I'm on second.
I got a motion from Rick and a second from Bruce. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye, opposed say no. Carry. Communication items, no, we'll get to you again.
Sure. Um, so administratively, I want to just update you on on three different things today. We have a very hearty agenda, so there's a lot for us to talk through. Many of those things will will reflect some of the work that we're doing throughout just our our additional people here. But first and foremost, I want to just provide a real brief update on some of our COVID, the the COVID instances and communication that's gone out to families. Really, after Thanksgiving, we did see a significant increase in cases throughout our buildings. Most of those, there were some at the elementary, but majority of those were at the secondary level. The second week after was better and so I was encouraged by that. But I just wanted to remind people that, you know, during the holidays, especially when we're coming back after holiday break, you know, if students are not feeling well, you know, really be vigilant in paying attention to how kids are feeling. So that if we're having increase in cases, those are not coming into school. But again, I have the communication that I've sent out to families, I've I've really had a very, very limited pushback. I the area I do want to just bring to the forefront is reminding people about the mandate of masking on buses. It is it is a federal mandate and it's a requirement, so our we have been providing masks to the buses. If kids are not coming to the bus with a mask, they can grab one. But just as a reminder, that is a federal mandate at this point, so and that has been extended until March. Any questions on the COVID information before I move on? The other piece I wanted to let you know is just from a strategic planning perspective. The admin group, we have been reviewing the goals, our our four goals over the course of our admin meetings. And so I'm excited in January to start kind of sharing out some updates about where those things are at. But I did want to just reassure you, the board, that we are keeping that strategic plan in the focus of our discussions administratively. And then the last thing I have for you is something that's pretty cool from our elementary family groups. They had, so just as a reminder, our family groups are the clusters of kids that are kindergarten, first, second, third, fourth, fifth, led by those fifth graders. And then as they transition into the high school, that fourth grader will or the middle, the sixth grade over here, that fourth grader will become the leader and they'll welcome in a new kindergartner. So one of the things that that group has been doing are notes of gratitude. And so all of you have as board members have a note of gratitude from our family groups. So thank you, board, for what you do and thank you to our our family groups for taking the time and and sharing that gratitude and kindness to our school board. So I'll leave those for each of you to pick up at the end of the day. So those are the three items that I have for my administrative report today.
Do we, are we going on with?
We can, I think, I think our student representatives had just a couple of items that were separate from the student council information, so we'll let them go ahead and give their report.
Um, so for sad, last Friday, we had an ice cream like team get together. Everyone just brought something and we just had a team group and then which was really good and we're having we're help we're starting to help the fifth graders with Dare. We're starting to go have meetings with them and we're just planning more events.
Yeah, with the NHS, um, we raised over four hundred and fifty dollars at our last bake sale. That is going to be used by clothing for local families. Um, and FFA is currently distributing their food sales, so if you didn't pick yours up, they probably want you to do so soon. They met their goal of a thousand plus items and their organization actually gets five dollars in items. That's pretty awesome for them. And they are beginning a membership program with like seniors working with freshmen. It still looks pretty cool.
Yeah, sports, girls' basketball game got canceled tonight because of COVID and then they have one Thursday and Friday this week and boys have one Wednesday or Tuesday, Thursday, Friday.
Yes, um, hockey for boys and girls tonight and slaying Thursday.
Gymnastics tonight, right?
Thank you.
And any committee or organizational reports?
Well, since I sat through a four hour Zoom meeting on Tuesday, I want to give credit for you. But same routes met and I think basically gathering information and so there's really nothing to report except information being gathered about safe routes in our community, which includes schools. Janelle, something else, or Bruce?
I thought it was quite impressive, actually. I thought, oh my gosh, this is gonna drive me crazy. Well, it was quite interesting. They were taking a ton of data. David and Mary and Mike from the school bus, I thought, were excellent in participating with what's going on here. It was very impressive. And so they all got what's going on in Painesville from those three, or those three people. And so thank you, guys.
I'll just comment quick on negotiations committees. We're still we're kind of finalizing some some contracts and then some some negotiations and we have a couple left to go, I'd say. Just to kind of clean up things, but we're still making progress on with all the the groups with negotiations, so.
Districtwide staff development meeting and that committee is is changing a lot. And they're still looking for more representatives, trying to be more inclusive of every group in the school district. And we are also looking into, well, we have joined YIPA.
YIPA.
And that will be another training process that is very reasonably priced in the whole school can take advantage of.
I'm gonna get the acronym for you because I miss I always interchange it. It's the Youth Intervention Program Association. And it's a it's a it's a organization that provides training and informational opportunities for anyone within our organization, including board members around mental health, just some some really good student awareness and supports.
And I will keep on with the other group that we were with also at the same time, at least to see if we need to eliminate one. But this one is minimally charged, so really save us a lot of money. We're looking into when to do awards and how. And it looks like we're going to be able to do that this year. Everything is in person. And I, oh, I was really impressed because the full district is going to get together on one training day. School, both schools are going to be together for part of the day. And I don't know that that's been done for years and years and years. I'm hoping it will bring people together more. That would be perfect. That was most of what I got out of it.
Any else?
We had a Schools for Equity and Education meeting on Friday open Rose Roseville. Just kind of recognize some of the services, some of the members, Deprive is retiring and then Dick Berkey as well, who've been longtime leaders in the organization. Senator Nelson, Carolyn Nelson, the tax chair, former head chair in the Senate, talked about kind of the budget surplus that we have, about seven point seven billion dollars. And kind of their priority of where they'd want to see that on her side is the Republican member in the tax chair. And then Eric Guthrie, Dr. Eric Guthrie, who is the senior state demographer, kind of talked to us about the results of the latest census and the trends that he was seeing specifically, very interestingly, that the everywhere else, things are changing, more diversity in the state of Minnesota, but the one area that is not growing is the kind of the twelve to eighteen year old white population is not. He noted that's a big change for what we usually see in the state of Minnesota, so diversity is definitely coming to Minnesota, not just in the Twin Cities area, but increasingly rural Minnesota. So, yeah.
All right, old business we have none. Move on to new business. Start with A, the senior high student representatives.
All right, so senior high, come on up. Yep, you guys, okay, hop right in.
Well, we're members of the high school student council. I'm Kiana Rosky. I'm a senior here and I'm the president.
I'm I'm a Stanley. I'm a junior and I'm the event coordinator.
I'm Michaela Roeburg. I'm the vice president and event coordinator.
So first off, this fall, we had our first ever formal dance and the pack or the community said it was generous enough to let us use the pack and we were in there, we were able to like get a DJ setup on top of the stage and we were, we had a dance going on and then we had some snacks. And it was a great event. We had an amazing turnout, probably one of the best we've ever had for dances. And we had great feedback from all the students that attended.
Um, next up, we have the blood drive coming to Painesville from Red Cross next Wednesday and we had seventy-five slots open and every single one is filled, so that brings us above our goal and on our way to a scholarship for our school. And half of, over half of them was by our students and staff and the rest was by our community, so thank you. And yeah, we can't wait for next Wednesday.
And then also with next week, we have like a kind of like a Christmas celebration. So Monday through Wednesday, we'll have dress up days, like pajamas, Christmas slippers. And the other one was it dressed with. Um, and then we're gonna be heading to the elementary school with Santa and bringing sweets to the younger kids. Um, and then we also have a lip sync battle going on, so that'll be down in the auditorium and then groups can pick a song if they want to sing and dance to it. Yeah, it'll be fun.
And then last week, um, in February, we're gonna have our Sweet Fest dance and this time it's not gonna be formal, but we're planning to have it more as like a game night, a movie night, just more of a hangout. And we're hoping to use the pack again and I think we're planning on doing that. And we sent out an attendance for that or just like a pre, if you think you're gonna come to it. And we had a great turnout. Our numbers were even higher than our formal dance, so we're excited for that.
Any questions for the student council?
Thank you very much. Thank you. And the middle school representatives.
Um, I'm Lydia Schmidt and I'm the president.
I'm Kayla Top and I'm the vice president.
I'm Mckenna Barton and I'm the treasurer.
And so like the first thing we had this year was our homecoming dance and we had eighty-five percent of middle school students that showed up. So that was good turnout and a lot of people had fun and that stuff, so. And then also we had for our memory book where people could like draw things that they want to cover and then they had a competition on who was gonna vote for everything. And yeah.
Okay, next week we have our Midwinter Activity Day where all advisors compete against each other with like minute to win at games. And so we have, like we go to each advisor and the like each classroom will provide their like game or something.
Like for home.
Provide the games and yeah. Like we have when we're going to elementary, like they said, where they're handing out like sweets and stuff, so.
Also, when we had our dance earlier this year, normally they always have it in the middle school gym, so we have each side. It like one side's a dance and it's dark and they have like glow sticks and stuff and the other side's for games. But this year, since it was all gonna be in one gym, we had to like make it work so we could still do the games in the dark. So we put a lot more, a lot of work into making everything glow up and.
Any questions for our middle school student council or?
Thank you.
Awesome. Say thanks.
Thanks, you guys.
See, this will be your twenty-one audit report.
All right, so um, I will have you come on in here.
Pull up a chair.
Yep, pull up a chair and I'm gonna pull up the audit report. Um, and let me just do this too.
Oh, yeah, we have hard copies.
Yep, I have a couple of hard copies for people and I'm if um, if board members would prefer a hard copy versus the digital one, feel free, there's about five of them or four or five of them.
The supply chain issues, uh, provider of toner apparently. So we couldn't have any colored toner and we just got it today, so we could send some hard copies out, but yeah, the news might need to be read for us. All right, so um, yeah, so there should be, I I'm gonna walk us through kind of a high level overview of the audit, the process and and the results this year. So as in the past, gonna start out by talking a little bit about the audit process and what exactly it is that we do during the audit. If you want, I can share.
You want, yes, that's me.
Yep, that'd be fair. Okay, so for starters, the audit essentially consists of us obtaining your financial records and information from the past year and then performing a number of procedures over this information for the purpose of expressing an opinion on whether or not your financial statements are accurate. So the procedures are kind of laid out or summarized up there, basically inquiries with people inside and outside of the district, various analytics where we develop expectations and compare to actual results, and then lots and lots of detailed testing. So whether it be reviewing invoices, looking at reports from the state, bank statements, et cetera. And based on the results of this, these procedures, we've given you what's called an unmodified or a clean opinion. So that's the best opinion you can achieve. That's the same one you've had in the past. That's the overall opinion, the overall result of the audit. Next slide here talks a little bit about the audit process and how things actually went. This is where we would let you know if there were any issues we ran into during the audit. So if there were any, you know, unusual transactions that we saw or difficulties working with management or anything along those lines. As you can see, audit went very smoothly, nothing along those lines in the report. The one item we do always like to point out is at the bottom there, there's a few estimates in the financial statements. The net pension liability and the net OPEB liability, those are based on actuarial inputs that can really fluctuate from year to year. And then also that amount that's due from MDE at the end of the year, year entitlement, is really kind of a moving target. At this point, it should be nailed down, but it seems to always bounce around a little bit as they figure things out.
Can we ask questions on the go?
Yes, absolutely.
So um, how does that look compared to other years? Like, some of these are still estimates that we would have last year or the year before that, so nothing significantly changed.
Yeah, usually the the final, uh, the the entitlement isn't fully finalized and locked down until June twentieth is the final report that comes out for the previous fiscal year, believe it or not. So there'll be a June twentieth, twenty twenty-two report that comes out and and potentially a final payment or adjustment that relates all the way back to fiscal FY twenty-one. So yeah, it's it's very standard practice.
Okay.
Okay, next page. As part of the audit, we do look at your internal controls and some some of those processes and procedures that are behind the numbers. Then we've got a few items to report to you here. These three are kind of the the common standard three that we report at a lot of districts we go to. The first one here relates to audit adjustments. There were a few adjustments that we helped out with at the end of the audit. Most of them not really of any significance. There was one a little bit larger related to the building construction, getting some payables set up for that at the end of the year. Next item here relates to lack of segregation of duties. Basically, every district we work with has this finding just because, you know, you only have so many staff that are involved with the audit process. So because there's certain people that have full access to the accounting system, we have to let you know that, let you know to keep a little more oversight wherever possible. And then finally, we do prepare the financial statements and as a third party preparing the financial statements on behalf of the district, there's always a, the idea is there's a heightened risk. There could be a disclosure missing or something along those lines. Next page, as part of the audit, the state actually gives us various checklists related to reviewing your compliance with Minnesota statutes. So there's checklist related to your contracting, bidding, compliance with, you know, where you keep your public funds, conflicts of interest, et cetera. We did have a few findings this year as we worked through the audit. All three of these related to the contracting and bidding section. The first one listed there, we did have a few purchases over twenty-five thousand dollars for the quotes were not on file. So quotes potentially were obtained when making these purchases, but they weren't on file. The next item there, actually, the the next two items both relate to a door access project that was completed during the year. The first one, withholding affidavit. Essentially, the contractor is supposed to file a withholding affidavit at the end of the contract where they tell the state that they gave the proper withholdings on all of their employees' wages. And then they send you a document confirming that they did that. And the school isn't supposed to make final payment to that contractor until that confirmation's been received, but that confirmation wasn't actually on file. So that's the second bullet point there. And then the third bullet point in that contract with with the contractor, there's supposed to be a disclosure that they've signed basically saying that they've complied with all these Minnesota statutes related to having proper insurance, having a valid tax ID, et cetera, et cetera. And that disclosure wasn't on file either.
Is this something we need to get fixed? Or is this just a slap on the fingers and we move on and try and fix it going forward?
Yeah, those those last two have been extremely common whenever there's a project because it's one of these things that's so far and few between that people aren't aware of the requirements. So we do see these, those last two findings quite a bit. But really, there is there's no real consequences unless you have repetitive findings, then the state might reach out to you and ask what's going on. All right, next page. This is something that's new this year. Because of the extra federal funding that you received as part of the pandemic that came out, you had federal funding, federal expenditures this past year of over seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And whenever that happens, we have to do what's called a single audit, which is basically an extra federal program compliance audit in conjunction with the typical audit that we do each year. So as part of this, we had to do an assessment and select a major program, federal program for testing. We tested the child nutrition cluster, so your lunch program, lunch and breakfast. As you can see, we had a clean opinion on what you reported for federal expenditures, also a clean opinion on compliance. We do have just one note there related to internal controls. Again, there were some instances where, so the funding that's received under this program is based on the number of meals that you've served. So you report how many meals you served each month and the the funding comes through based on that. And the amount of meals that were reported didn't always quite line up with the internal reports that were in file. So we just had a recommendation to make sure that whenever you make those submissions, make sure there's a backup or a corresponding internal report. And I believe that's already been changed, that process, so. Okay, with that, we'll get into the numbers. First slide here, oh, the numbers aren't showing up up there.
You know what, it's probably because it didn't download.
Well, I can just verbally walk through, that's fine. So basically, this is showing from twenty seventeen through twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-one being on the far right, your enrollment over the last five years. So from twenty nineteen to twenty twenty, you can see you had a bit of a decrease in your enrollment here. Drop down to eight hundred and ninety, or eight hundred and ninety-five students for FY twenty-one, down about fifty-five students compared to FY twenty. So the reason that that's significant is of course because your funding from the state is tied directly to your enrollment. So on the next slide here, see, we're gonna have this.
Can I just, I'll, let me work on that.
Yeah, yeah, you're you're able to fix it.
Yep, I can get that.
Yep, sounds good. I mean, it shows up right there.
I saw one yesterday that was on and all the rest of them didn't have it on. Nothing is back for today and it was off again.
Yeah, I had the same problem.
I was like, what's the?
It was just pretty artwork.
If you, uh, because it's opened in a tab instead of being downloaded.
I think it's because. So let's, yeah, I had it downloaded on mine.
All of the writings are downloaded.
This one, so this one? Then I'll just open it there.
Yep, and then they should show.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thanks.
Well, then I can blow that little notification too. Lovely. So let's move that over here and then we'll clear it and then um, you can go back to. We get the whole, the whole nine yards. Is that okay?
Yeah, that's fine by me. I don't have anything else in there. I own old school.
Hey, there's sometimes old school is really nice. So there you go. Whoops, you gotta go back to.
There we go.
Okay.
Okay, so this is where we left off. General fund, looking at a high level analysis of your revenues and your expenses over the past five years. And then we do have the twenty twenty-one budget on the right hand side there too. So this is just big picture for now. We will look at this in a little more detail in the next couple slides. But anyway, I was talking about that decrease in enrollment. Typically with that, you would see a drop off in your revenues in that blue bar. But you can see it actually held pretty steady from twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one. That's because, in my mind, it's because of the additional federal funding that you received this year from the pandemic. So it kind of offset that entitlement to the otherwise receiving for those students. So a- as a note for that, the federal funding that you've received this year is on a reimbursement basis. So it's reimbursing you for expenses that you've incurred. Whereas the funding from pupil units from your enrollment is just based on the number of students you have. So that could be part of the reason that for the first time here in several years, you've got your expenditures outweighing your your revenues. Along with the fact that you have some capital project expenses run through the general fund as well. But with that, comparison to the budget here, your actual revenues came through at about eleven million, seven hundred and thirty thousand dollars. That's about one point five million dollars below budget. That's almost entirely related to differences in federal funding. That's almost entirely related to differences in federal funding that we'll look at in a, in a moment here. Uh, expenditures, on the other hand, came in over budget about two hundred and thirty-five thousand at about twelve point six million. So overall, you had budgeted for an increase of about eight hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars, you actually did have a decrease of about nine hundred and eleven thousand dollars. Next couple.
A million seven slink.
Yep, but we'll, we'll go over that. Like I said, most of that relates to the general fund revenues. And right here, we have a breakout of your revenues, uh, showing the same, the same revenues from the previous slide, but broken out into greater detail. Uh, you can see across the board, with green being the budget and red being what actually happened. Pretty close across the board with the exception of the federal sources category. So that's where that difference is coming into play on revenues. And I believe what happened there is that you were told what your entitlements were going to be for ESSER and, and GEAR and, you know, the coronavirus relief fund. And then all of it didn't come through timely, you know, some of these revenues are gonna come through in FY twenty-two. And that's where this difference came into play, so it's, it's mostly just a timing issue here. Same layout on the next slide for expenditures. Uh, across the board here, very close, looking at your actual twenty twenty-one results versus the budget. The biggest driver of your difference is on the far right-hand side, capital outlay. Uh, you had about three hundred and seventeen thousand dollars over budget on capital outlay. And this is due to costs related to your building construction that flowed through the general fund.
So that, that three seventy is topped over on, on the building budget, um, of three seventy?
Yep. Yeah, so most of the building construction expenses went through Fund Six, your, your building construction fund financed with those bond proceeds. Uh, but there were some costs that were run through Fund One, um, my, the, the general fund. My understanding would, would be that that was probably so you could use up some of your LTFM dollars, your restricted dollars that are, uh, core movements of that nature. I am not sure what the exact.
And we can talk a little bit about that when we get to the, the, the end portion, cause some of those are, um, and I'll just reference maybe, um, if you don't mind. One of the things that was, um, the door systems and the fobbing was updated throughout the district. Um, in conjunction with the project that was taken care of, so like the, there's sensors on all the doors, um, so that we can monitor if they're left open or if they're. Um, there's the key fob system that now, um, we're able to access throughout. That wasn't paid for out of building funds, that was paid for out of, out of, uh, capital funds. But it was part of, it was done at the same time, so do you know what I'm saying, so.
But that was planned.
Right, but it was, it was, it was a planned expenditure of a, of the capital, which is part of where that three hundred thousand dollars comes from.
That's not about. Okay. Move on to the next slide here, uh, okay, so this is looking at your fund balance in the general fund at the end of each year for the past five years. Uh, you know, overall, I talked about how there was a decrease in fund balance of nine hundred and eleven thousand. That's what you're seeing for the overall drop-off of this bar from twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one. Uh, and this just shows the different classifications as far as the portion that's unassigned versus assigned for special purchases. Versus restricted or, or in a non-spendable type form. Um, biggest changes here, assigned fund balance dropped off about four hundred thousand dollars. And then unassigned dropped off about two hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars. Next page focuses particularly on that unassigned fund balance. Uh, you have a policy in place where the unassigned portion of your fund balance as a goal should be approximately twelve point five percent of the annual budget or, or greater. Um, you can see at the end of twenty twenty-one, you were down to about fourteen point seven percent. So a bit of a drop-off from the previous year, uh, but still in excess of your policy. And if you just wanna know what your cash balance was at the end of the year or over the past few, five years, this is a trend of the general fund cash. So dropped off, what, six hundred thousand at about four point two million at the end. Okay, so the rest of the funds we'll look at here much quicker. Of course, the, the focus is primarily on the general fund, but here we have your other funds too. Uh, debt service activity here is basically what you would expect, property tax revenues coming in, making your debt payments for expenditures. Uh, increased about forty-nine thousand dollars there. Building construction, uh, mostly just active, mostly the activity here is just your expenditures for the building construction project. Spending down those bond proceeds from the previous year. Uh, so you ended the year with about one point three seven million left in the building construction fund. Next page just looks at the cash in both of those funds over the past several years. Um, nothing out of the ordinary here, building construction is, is kind of the only thing swinging here, spending down those bond proceeds from the previous year. And then we have your food service fund and community service fund, activity here very similar to prior years. Um, food service, you have an increase in your fund balance of about forty-five thousand dollars, community service increased about a hundred thousand dollars. And both of those funds had increases in their cash balances, so up to about three hundred and ninety-four thousand in community service. Okay, so that's each of the district's funds, uh, the next few pages here. Uh, we take a look at your district-wide financials where we wrap all of those funds together and then we include things that are non-current. So like your capital assets, your loan debt, et cetera. So here we have just a really big picture of your overall district-wide assets. Uh, you can see from twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one, overall, very little change, assets held steady. The biggest difference is that the blue, the current assets were being converted into buildings and improvements and as you work through your project. So nothing too over the ordinary there. Same layout on the next page, looking at the district-wide liabilities. Uh, for a moment, just to ignore that green bar, pretend it's not there, uh, and without that, you can see your liabilities held pretty steady. Uh, your current liabilities, the blue, did increase a bit, that's those extra construction-related payables at the end of the year. And then your red bar, the outstanding debts and other non-current liabilities, that actually dropped off about, uh, four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Now, the reason I say ignore that green bar, that's your net pension liability. So that's your proportionate share of the statewide pension plans, para and TRA, that you've basically just been assigned. You couldn't even pay that off if you wanted to, so it's an on-paper liability only, and I see some smiles, we've talked about that.
Yeah, well, we just heard about the rig surplus, there was always a conversation that when you have those surpluses, they should fix this and get it off our financials.
Well, it's probably not in the right book. Everything's segregated, you know. Okay, so the next slide, uh, because I personally don't care for showing that pension liability in the financial statements, I always like to show this slide. Uh, that excludes the pension activity or the pension balances. And here we just have a comparison of the district-wide assets versus liabilities excluding those pension balances. And then we have that green line, which is the net between the two. So you can see on a net basis, uh, for the past five years, been, been holding pretty steady despite fluctuations in assets and liabilities. And then just a quick slide showing your outstanding debt over the past five years. Down about six hundred and thirty thousand dollars from the prior year, just due to payments you made during the year, at about seventeen point six million at the end of the year. I added on, uh, one last minute extra slide here, just kinda give you a heads up about a new accounting standard that's going into effect. Uh, I, I suppose it's actually in effect already for FY twenty-two, but you won't see it until the, you know, next year's financial statements. Um, this relates to how we account for your leases. So right now, any leases that you have are either operating leases or they're capital leases. So a capital lease is basically, you're buying something, you're, you're taking the asset, it's yours now, and then you're paying off the debt over time. An operating lease historically has been, you're not actually purchasing it, but you're making payments and then you get to use it. Um, so those payments have just been expensed in the past as you've made them. The change now is that even if it's an operating lease, you know, or formerly what we've known as the operating lease. We need to now record a liability in asset for it. So the idea here is that you're most likely going to be making these payments, all these future payments under the lease agreement. So they want you to take the present value of those future lease payments and record a liability and then record an offsetting right-to-use asset. So this is something that's, uh, going to require some additional calculation and additional disclosures in the financials. Uh, it won't impact your fund-level financials too significantly. Uh, maybe from the accounting in, internally, you will have to code some things differently. Um, but really, these balances just need to be in those district-wide financials, you know, those last few pages I just went through. Just giving you a heads up that a few changes are coming.
So define the leases a little bit, ask a question, at one time, um, a number of years ago, when we were out of money for certain things. One of the options was leases, is that kind of what we're talking about?
Yep, exactly, so, I mean, it, it could be anything, if you're leasing vehicles, you know, if you're leasing a copier, if you're leasing anything at all, um, you know, it's. It's just the way that we're presenting it, that's what's going to change, so, you know, nothing changes as far as how the cash actually flows or, you know, the nature of the agreement, that's all the same. It's just now we have to put a little more work into it and, uh, you know, calculate these balances and financials. Any questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Yep.
Uh, I'd like to. I think it's a motion to approve the twenty-one budget, or, um, I don't remember.
I got a motion from Bruce.
Second.
Second from Megan, any further discussions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Who would say no? Carrie. Twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, final budget after audit.
Thank you so much, thank you.
All right, so, um, this is gonna be a document that you're very familiar, that is, is very familiar to you, and so this was updated. Um, to reflect the final budget after the revised budget that Carrie, um, and Carrie updated this after, um, the audit report came through. So a couple of things that I just wanted to highlight, um, so the, the budget that was approved or that was revised in, um. For twenty twenty-one had a deficit expenditure of three hundred and ninety-four thousand, eight hundred and sixteen dollars. And you'll see that the actual, what was actually deficit spend was two hundred and seventy-eight dollars, eight hundred and, or two hundred and seventy-eight thousand, nine hundred and eighty dollars. Okay, so, so it came back in a better position than what is initially anticipated, um, from a deficit spend. So, um, I thought that was important to, to kind of walk through as well. The other piece that I just want to kind of walk through and remind people about are, um, the, the funds that are assigned. That we, the board has, has, has designated that those are, the funds that are sitting in those areas are intended for specific purposes. Um, so you'll notice things like, um, the fundraising account for field trips for the elementary school, that's a designated, that, that's not, that fundraising money can only be used for certain purposes. You'll notice the, um, that our, um, our gala grant is in there, so when we've had money that has been fundraised through the gala. That is designated, um, and can only be spent on those designated items. Additionally, you'll notice the Dillon Endowment is in a similar, um, uh, a similar vein. Where the money that is received has to be sent, spent on those specific items. So, um, I just wanted to remind everybody that, um, those assigned, um, those funds are specific to those areas, okay? Um, otherwise, this, this document has been updated to reflect the information that was just presented by our, our auditor. So are there any questions for me about any of these specific areas? Uh, or Carrie, myself or Carrie, I guess.
Otherwise, we'll look for a motion to approve the twenty twenty, twenty-one budget. I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Second from Cheryl. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Who would say no? Carrie. Indoor air quality cost increase.
Okay, um, so Thomas and I had a conversation about this and I wanted to bring back a couple of things to you. Because I think, um, there's just been some, um. I know when, when our initial bids came in so significantly over budget, there was a, there was a shock factor. And I think that the board, um, we all responded to that shock with like, okay, what's going on and where is this coming from? And so I wanted to take just a minute to walk through what we have learned over the course of the last few weeks. About the industry as a whole in heating, cooling, indoor air quality type projects, okay? And, um, and so, uh, one of the things that I think is important is, um, I've asked, you know, I've asked SiteLogic to gather some information. I've done my own information, I know my board members have also been doing some research to kind of understand. Is this, was this out of the ordinary based on the scope of the project and what has been happening across the industry? And, um, so as, as a, for instance, um, when I had a conversation with, and maybe I'll just invite, um, Scott to kind of, kind of shimmy up in here and he can, he can join us as. Um, and chime in when, when he feel appropriate as well, but, uh, one of the things that we really did is we took a look at, you know. Your, when the estimates were, were put together, when this bid package went out in May, cause that's really where our first question came in, is like, what is this gonna look like? Um, as an industry whole, they did not anticipate that we would be facing the issues that we are today. And, um, as, as a, as an example, when I asked Scott, you know, where else are you seeing this, how else is this coming across? You know, I think you shared with me an example about, um, a, a board, uh, doing a, some projects in Iowa. That their project came in, and that's in our, in our Midwest region here, right, so this is all very kind of consistent. And the project, the, the board came in, the, the bid that came in was over budget, the board said, nope, we're gonna rebid it. They rebid it one month later and it was ten percent over budget again. So there's just so many variables and as I've been learning more about that, I'm even hearing from a, from a, um, like, uh. If I were gonna build my own house right now, my plumbing, heating bid is good for about five days. Before they will not honor it anymore. So I, I think that that speaks to the volatility of the industry of, of what we're dealing with right here. So the reason I'm bringing that back and I wanted to, to use that just as an explanation here is because I wanna make sure. So as I step back and I look at the decision the board makes and the recommendation of the board, kind of in the scope of this project. I wanna make sure that, that you all are, are happy with the outcome of the project, knowing kind of the scope of, that this. I do feel like those costs are legitimate and I do feel like they are explainable. And it is the concept of what is happening across the industry at this moment in time, okay? So the reason that we put that back on is because I didn't feel like we had a, a really robust discussion about all of those dynamics. That really did account for why that project was twenty-three percent over budget, right? I know we talked about in generals and we talked about labor, but there's more, there, it. It is industry-wide and it's across the big picture of our scope. So are there any questions that the board has about kind of the, the nature of the pro, the project? When I look back at the scope of what the board wanted to do back in twenty nineteen. It was all encompassing to, to do the indoor air quality of, um, of the, the ventilator units with the dehumidification to address the whole. It was, it was addressing it all, right? So then I also took a look at how did we move forward in the PAC, for example? What did we include and how did we move forward there? That also is all-inclusive of all of these components that we've talked about. Now, that system is run a little bit differently, that's reliant on the boiler and, and so on for the dehumidification, but. There's, there's some nuances that are different, but it is, as a whole, the project is, that we did at the PAC. Is similar in, in structure to what this project would have been if it would have maintained where, where it came in at the two point four million dollars, okay? So the reason I put it back is I just wanna make sure that, um, as, as Thomas and I were visiting and really understanding. So the reason I put it back is I just wanna make sure that, um, as, as Thomas and I were visiting and really understanding that we have SiteLogic here again to say, if there are any additional questions about the cost or about where this came in and if there's any, I, I wanted to make sure that you as a board, when you move forward, are happy with the outcome of the project based on where you all started the discussion in twenty nineteen. Right? Because I do know that when you all started this discussion, it was all inclusive. And I, I very much understand that sticker shock of looking at the, the cost and going, oh my gosh. Right? So are there any questions or any comments from the, from the board about that additional information?
I'm assuming this is where I'd like to chime in a little bit.
Sure.
Um, I watched the meeting last time. Um, we have talked about this for a long time. Uh, went back to the May meeting where we basically accepted this project that we're gonna do. But what came to the board last time was, um, whittling the project down to make it less expensive. I was hoping it would be more alternatives. I have a lot of questions about whittling that down and we all talked about it. But the one is dehumidification, air conditioning. We can combine and mix that up all you want. But when the temperatures outside are eighty degrees or ninety degrees and in the CO2 change of air, generally you're trying to get four to, you guys can correct me by just what I read, four to six changes in the rooms a year or in an hour as compared to what used to be two to three being acceptable. Well, um, I picked myself up a CO2 meter in the process of all this. And I can hold that right here while I'm talking like you are today. And I can go over the top of the limits in there, which means that now you're taking twenty, thirty kids and we are loading CO2. Our CO2 problem is only when they're there. But, so we talked about stripping the, the air conditioning portion out of it. I looked and looked and looked for it, but it came up at one of our meetings, a number of times ago with SiteLogic, where we talked about the air conditioning. It's kind of a, um, sensitive area for lots of people. Um, but what was explained to me is if you're going to change that air, that air needs to be changed all the time. Not just when it's cool outside. Now, just when it's warm outside, it has to be all the time. So when the furnace is running and you're calling for heat, you need to be changing that air. Now you guys probably know better than I do, but the reading I did on the two thousand nineteen rules of this thing, temperature is equated into this somehow. I had no understanding of that formula in particular. I didn't spend a lot of time on it. But it's not really designed for rooms that are ninety, that are rooms at a hundred. So do, and you brought it up at the last meeting. I thought Megan brought it up and said, so what do we do then? Well, if it's eighty outside in April and we are pumping air in, that's not gonna get cooled off and the CO2 is driving it, those rooms are gonna get really hot in there. And, uh, they're not necessarily gonna get cooler with the kids. It's gonna get hotter than the kids. Well, so we have CO2 could slow down learning, right? Heat probably is worse than that. So what's, what happens? I, I'm not sure compared to how I saw the meeting end, compared to how it started, whether that should be out of the project. A basis that I use for that. SiteLogic has actually given us a lot of good information over the years. Some with the project that we did came off really well. But at the same time, if our goal is CO2, our goal then, in my mind, is how do we change the air controlling the climate for the children? And I don't see how it can work. Um, I did send some questions and Scott, I think you answered them. But I just don't see it work with stripping that bid down. I think we more need to be looking at getting that bid coming in very similar to what it was and figuring out how we pay for it with the least damage to the public as far as the taxation, which they just turned off on us, um, a few weeks back. So.
Yes. Thank you for your questions. And are there any other thoughts or, or comments?
I think we all would like the bid to come back closer to where it was, but it's not going to. Do you know what I mean? Like those price, tho- tho- that cost is gonna be where it is.
I mean, the bunch of sources that I had, they all said it was there. Plus I read everywhere that every company was anticipating an inflation rider, an inflation of this year between ten and twelve percent. So that's obviously in this, in addition, um, there was nobody I checked with from commercial contractors to others that thought that it was out of range. It was, I personally was very surprised. I was even having trouble associating where this came from.
And I guess, so, so as Janelle mentioned, for me, there's a big sticker shock when the, the bid came out because it's clearly way over budget and the other aspect of it, and this, you know, I sat in the committee, facilities committee, going through all these conversations and, and in all these conversations, we talk about dehumidification. And at the same breath, I'm always like, but we don't need air conditioning. Dehumidification makes sense, but don't need air conditioning. If you can't have dehumidification without air conditioning, I guess that's a whole different story. But you know, on the flip side, our, our PAC or fieldhouse is dehumidified, not air conditioned. Was that accurate to say?
I would say it's both.
It, it is air conditioning.
Yeah, I was gonna say both.
So, so, and I think the, one of the pieces that, can I just add? When, when, when we think about air conditioning in a facility like this, I think, I think about air conditioning in my sense, I walk in, I'm hot, I pump down my thermometer and I kick on the AC. That's the way I think about air conditioning. Right? That's not the way these systems are designed. And I think that that's an, an important differentiation to me.
And I don't, I don't, I don't have that confusion whatsoever. I understand the concept of air conditioning, I understand the concept of, of this. But will this system correct CO2 levels without air conditioning? Well, it, it's still changing that air over, correct? Whether or not with, with air conditioning, it, so the CO2 is, is theoretically still being, to a point controlled with that. With the change.
Without dehumidification.
Without dehumidification.
You will have better air quality, yes.
Correct.
Which CO2 is a part of.
So the, the dehumidification, air conditioning portion is strictly just to maintain, to help maintain the room climate, the, the, the temperature, the humidity in the room when necessary. Right? So, uh, our, our key humid months of year are, what, June, July, August, maybe a little September? I, you know, maybe a little bit of May, a little, you know. May, June, September, so you know, we're, we're a couple of months. And, and that was my only notion in our last meeting. I'm not opposed to, if the board wants to move forward with changing that and go back around, I'm not opposed to that, that thought process. That was just my comments before, you know, we're, we're gonna look at funding this project, uh, you know, for, for what, you know, for this cost, for that extra cost and can we do it? And that, you know.
I think we also need to look at too of, you know, okay, yep, it was sticker shock. So we took out the air conditioner and the dehumidification. But then as I went back and thought about it too, what's gonna happen down the road? Are we gonna get to a point where now we have to change them out because we ha- we need that in the building? I mean, we need to look at, yes, we have to look at the price, but we also have to look at what's it gonna cost us down the road too? If we end up chang- changing this out again because we don't have that.
What would make the, the, the cause of having to change it out? I, I just.
Well, I want to be aware.
If the O2 levels are too.
You, you talked about when the heating season is or when, when the summer.
Yeah.
It's expanding. Winter is shrinking in Minnesota and pretty soon September and October are gonna be warmer, I think, than what they have been.
It is possible. And I say April.
And December. Um, it's, it's cra- crazy. So I think what Megan is saying is, is what happens if we don't do it now and then ten years down the road, things have gone the other way.
Yes.
Right. I think our decision has to be made. Do we keep it as a scope of the project, what was originally intended? And pay more or stick to what we hope the budget would be? Can't have both. And so, you know what I mean? The scope of the project now encompasses a bigger price package.
Which potentially, which potentially, you know, depending on a, a, a funding source that we choose, you know, puts more of that tax burden against the district or against taxpayers. So it, that, that's that. That's the choice.
If I can just make a couple of comments and hopefully they'll be relevant. A day or two after your last board meeting, when Mike and I were here, I had called Janelle just to make sure I followed up. And, and one of the things I told her then was, um, that I, uh, you, we walk a fine line at SiteLogic, right? We're gonna do whatever you tell us to do, cooling, dehumidification or not. But one of the things I told Janelle was, I was kind of disappointed in myself as a former superintendent that I didn't, I, I, that I didn't say what I'm gonna say now. I, I think there will come a point in time, maybe to your point, I don't know what that will be. Sometimes the squeaky wheel gets the grease. I think there will come a point in time, or may, I probably better use that word, where if you don't go with dehumidification and cooling, and I understand the finances of it, right? You may regret that sometime down the road. Will it be better for kids with dehumidification and cooling? I believe it will be. Talked about temperature. There's, there's a lot of research. Even a four degree reduction in the temperature can, can mean three to five percent in increase in student performance. So it's, it's all related. Right? And, but again, we, we are here to try to answer questions and you tell us where we're going and we'll get you there.
Janelle, can I ask from your perspective and the admin team's perspective, you're in conversation, you're meeting with the staff.
Yeah.
Where, what's kind of the pulse that you are?
Yeah, um, I will tell you, so I, I, it was, I've looked back at this. So I've come in with a very third party perspective, right? Because I walked in to reviewing, I've watched numerous board meetings. Um, and I've read a, just a lot of board notes. And I know where the board started this discussion and I know where the board started to move toward this project. And I, when I look at that and I think about how, so this, so my opinion, as I look at this is, I, I, I worry that the board's gonna regret not doing the whole project. As I talked, as it kind of came forward, that this was the decision, I'll be honest, there was, there was an elementary like, oh, really? So I, I do know that there is a, that that's, that's a concern as well. I don't know how you articulate that, oh, really? But it's, it, there was a very, it, right, it matters for our students and our staff. Um, Steve, I don't know, i- i- you, you also came into this with a very kind of a removed third party. What's your?
And I'll a hundred percent agree with Janelle. I, I think it, um, would be a, a disappointment to students and staff not having the, the, the condition and, um, and dehumidification. And I, that, that's my feeling on it also is that, um, hopefully we wanna feel good about the decisions that we make moving forward here for students and, and staff and, and everybody involved. And that's, I would, I'd like to share anyway, so.
So I don't know if that's beneficial or if that's, I mean, I, and I, I tread kind of lightly knowing, again, I know that you all have had so much discussion about this as a board that I, I really did try to tread lightly of inserting my opinion into that. Um, but I, I do, I do think as a whole, the board's gonna wanna consider the long term and whether or not you're happy with the outcome of the project um, in, in meeting the goals that you all had talked about when this project came forward.
I hate to be real blunt here, but I think if it doesn't go through his entire project, the way it was originally planned, we're gonna be, a few years from now, going back, trying to figure out how to put it back the way it was originally planned. And the cost of that will be so prohibitive that we're, we're gonna really be stuck. It's, and I'm pretty sensitive. You all know that I'm pretty conservative. But you can't cut out what makes it work. We need to solve the CO2. We need to solve it at temperature levels that the kids can earn or, or let, learn at. And it was a surprise to me to find out that temperature actually. And you probably know what it is. It's seventy two degrees. I didn't even know what the standard commercial school space was supposed to be, but supposed to be seventy two degrees. That means that there are variations. You don't want the kids cold, we don't want them hot. But man, I, I can already see, oh, this I believe will happen. And it was actually confirmed. Janelle and I had a visit about it. So if it's really hot outside, you run, um, fans all night long, cool the room off, right? And then you shut the fans down. The moment you did that, you lost your CO2. It's gonna be full of CO2 for that whole period of time. Now, we didn't accomplish anything. Then we wasted the taxpayers' money. The five hundred thousand dollars or whatever it is, I think we can attribute that to something that nobody had the control of. SiteLogic had no control of it. Nobody has any control. We can't support, we can't guess, I'll guess, supply chains or whatever the, the thing may be. I don't know that it's gonna go away. I inquired with a few, wondering if it will go away. Should we leave the project, go for a year and then start up again? They're all saying this is not gonna stop. So we're gonna at least have two, three years of this. We have an item, we have to take care of for the kids. I don't know that we have a ton of alternatives.
I would just, to piggyback on that, I, if I had to say anything to the general public now, it would be that we have tried. We have looked at every angle. And this is where, and I agree with where, where Bruce is coming down. This is where we have to go, but we have tried.
Yeah.
We did look.
Yep.
We thought, well, maybe we can, but we couldn't. So it's not like we're just jumping into something. It has really been vetted thoroughly, I think, and I appreciate Bruce's work on this.
Um, any other discussion? Otherwise, do we need to make an amendment to our previous? Or how does that go to?
Yeah, um, I'm looking, I, I'm trying to, I think.
Can we get it put back the way it was if we decided today? Okay.
Yeah, because we need to amend because before it was with the deductions.
Yep.
You can on our end, I, you know.
Yeah.
It's up to you guys.
Well, Mark here is on your end. If I'll send it.
Contracts and contractors, we can make that.
Conversation if you can't get it.
No, they, and, and I did confirm before we even kind of bridged that, that we're, they're, they're able, I mean, we're almost, we're at like that last, the eleventh hour to make that decision, but that's, it is.
They want a decision. Yes, no doubt.
Yes, they're ready.
So you said those two bids came in at two point four million dollars? Or the bid came in at two point four million dollars? What do we need to do to amend it?
Oh, to it.
We add reductions. Or do we wanna have conversation about questions about parts of the reductions that still may exist? Some that should go away. Does anybody have questions on the rest of it? I mean, some of the questions I have is going from the technical things that we deal with, like computers that don't always work like we want them to. But it's kind of the generation. I don't know, I can't speak for Steve, but I'm thinking if they're trying to regulate the rooms, when we get this all done, if we have an issue with a, a zone valve, he's not going to know that if we don't have pretty detailed information. Now we have an air conditioner could kick in in the middle of the wintertime because the zone valve is shut off and the, the heat is pumping in. How do you, how do you get a grip on that? So, um, energy wise, we, it looks pretty complete. Questions about motion detectors and stuff? Do you guys know anything about that?
We do. I defer that to Mike, but yeah.
Well, the, and the motion sensor is somewhat an energy device. So if the room's unoccupied, you're gonna not ventilate the room. You're not gonna bring in the outside air. It's somewhat interchangeable with a CO2 sensor. So we can go either way on it. But we, the reason we, and the cost is the same. The reason we would recommend is, and, and the way we built it was to go with the motion sensor because CO2 sensors are more complicated and they, they tend to be a maintenance item.
That was my question. How, what is the longevity of these things and how dependable are they?
Yeah. They're getting better because they're being used a lot around the industry. But you still, you know, you should calibrate them every year probably. With a motion sensor, you don't have to calibrate them a year. You probably have to replace them every three, four, or five years. So that's, you know, that's a maintenance cost you're up against too. So that's something we can do. The advantage of a CO2 sensor is if somebody says, are you maintaining low CO2 levels? Steve can go to his computer, he can trend that, he can say, here, this is where the levels are at. We have a record of it.
But you could do the same thing by walking around with a CO2 sensor and checking the rooms.
Yeah.
Can I ask Steve, can I put you on the spot?
Sure.
I'm going to, um, from your perspective, when you looked at those reductions, what's like? What's like your sense, cause you're managing the crew and the team. You know how much time they're spending on all their duties, what is your kind of feedback?
I didn't, um, I wish I had them in front of me again here or something, so it's hard to. I, I need to look at them again, I, I guess, or something, but, um. Most of them all made sense to keep in place, I think, cause that's their, the engineers that, that do this all the time. And they make these choices for us to, to be in the best interest of the school and for it to run efficiently. So, does it?
Yeah, it does, cause I'm thinking, I don't wanna make a decision that now would put more work on your staff in time.
Right.
Which in the long run is gonna cost us more money and we're not seeing that, it's like a surface cost.
Yes, yeah.
And so I was just curious if you were like, oh my gosh, we can't, all these reductions, like. That's gonna cause, you know, all these secondary issues.
Yep.
That we just wouldn't see.
Yep, well, I rely on the experts to do their job on, on giving us the best product we have for the district. And, um, and that includes not taking that stuff out then, so.
There were some classrooms or rooms, right, Mike, that were mentioned as a deduct, potential deduct?
Yeah, some of the potential dedicts were, um, the locker room. Not putting a new unit in there.
There was an office.
Music room and music office?
Yeah.
Music room and music office?
Uh, well, the music office was just, um, demoing the old unit.
Yep, yeah.
Instead of just leaving a hunk of junk, so to speak. Hanging there doing nothing, we took out the cost of getting rid of it. So that was a five thousand dollar savings.
The, the locker room, as far as I know, there's just the teachers in there with, in there and the unit, I don't think is even running. It's just radiant heat in there that's controlling the locker room right now. So there really isn't getting any outside air in there for. Air movement in here or there for the teacher.
How about the flooring one, floor protection?
Floor protection one, I'd recommend we go ahead with that one. I think we, will we find?
Yes, yep. Floor protection to, yeah.
Remove that one for nine, what was it, nine thousand dollars, I believe, right?
Yep.
So if you took those, the recommendation that came to us was to get the ventilation in those areas you're just talking about. If we took it out, I, unless I missed something listening to it on, on, uh, um, or watching the video. I didn't see that amounted to anything major. But when you're talking about a teacher in there all the time, or students in there for a period of time. I don't think it's must more than five or 10 minutes, you are gonna change that CO2 level just like that. And I, I don't know that it would be wise to. Again, I'm pretty conservative, I just don't, I think you can't be so conservative that you're foolish and not getting it done right the first time.
How about the piping, Mike?
There were, there were a couple items we, we would recommend going with as far as the deducts. That was, uh, if you remember, I, I tried to explain the short circuit. Rating reduction? We would recommend going with that.
The aluminum versus the copper?
Aluminum versus copper.
You would recommend that?
Yeah.
Okay.
How much did that save?
The aluminum, it was twenty-two thousand eight hundred.
So in all of the information on aluminum, so mobile homes used to be all aluminum, right? And then they, they dropped that because it would break after a period of time, cause they were built over a lot of years there. And never had any trouble with any of the copper. Do we end up with, let's say we don't move out that school? And let's say fast forward, we're thirty years down the road. Have they had any issues show up from there, any annoying issues, or have we perfected that in a fashion that that is gone? Otherwise, I would be real careful, not, I would be really careful of that reduction, I personally don't like that one, I heard that.
Yeah, I talked about I'm contact it, the, through expansion, right? They can loosen the, the contacts, which then it's gonna create.
So that.
Create problems.
You got your aluminum wire coming in and you got your switchgear where you hook it to. They don't want aluminum hooked to their switchgear, they make you get an adapter.
Yeah.
At the aluminum to hook to their switchgear, so, you know, that might.
I'm not much a fan of that one, I, I know that it's twenty-two thousand dollars. But in the grand scale, a part of I, I've always felt on the school board was try not to saddle future school boards with. Something that we couldn't have done right in the first place.
We lived in a mobile, mobile home for a long time, and I know what copper wiring is because we were married a long time ago. And I'm kinda with Bruce, I kinda cringed on that one. And I'm kind of sold on the copper also.
So just wait, just, you know, um, if, what's the wish of us as a board? Do we just wanna move forward with the project as proposed and eliminate and not have any deductions?
I'm more interested in how we're gonna pay for it, not we just.
Just the project rate or what else?
Flooring and, there's a few items, but you know, they're, they're not big issues, but I think. When we dove in and looked at things, there's some, there, there's some things like in the air, there's an air barrier for going to. Away from a spray air barrier to poly. You know, the architects are, and the contractors are saying, in, in this situation. You can get by with the poly, it'll, it'll perform very well, if not equal to. So I wouldn't hesitate about going that and.
I'd put that one to you guys.
Yeah, I would just ask you to trust our construction knowledge, I can confer with Steve, Janelle, on these things, but.
I, I think you've looked into it very well and, and you're coming forward with some really good advice. We asked for some deductions and you guys really looked into it and came up with some viable options. I appreciate that.
We just say not to exceed the bid amount that is specified. Knowing that they're going to, I mean, we, do we don't have to list all, all the deductions, right? Or do we?
I don't believe we do, I think, so I, I, I think you guys are hearing the will of the board. You're hearing that they want, their, their intention is to be very frugal with this project. Knowing that, you know, there's, so. I think for you to bring forward recommendations to us of here are the cost-saving initiatives that we have seen. That will maintain the integrity of the project, I think that, that, that's your role. And so I then would say if you're comfortable not to exceed the cost of the project or the, the bid. Not to exceed the bid, then that would be an opportunity. It's, it would come, allow them to do that work that we have charged them to do, but keep the project moving forward and then talk about funding.
True move.
Okay, so I put together a draft, um, uh, if somebody wants to take a look at that. So essentially what, what you would be doing is amending the, thank you Scott. You would be amending, um, the adoption of the bid presented at the November twenty-third, twenty-twenty-one board meeting. To accept the bid as presented rather than with deductions. Cause the way that the promotion went forward in November. Was to accept the bid with all the recommended deductions. Okay, we didn't have a dollar amount that was presented at that, in that, in the board minutes. Cheryl, did you have a question?
No, I was just, just thinking we should, if, if it were possible, we could put into the resolution to, um. Not exceed the bid with whatever reductions the crew thinks acceptable.
Sure. I'll wordsmith it, someone can help me with what you'd like to. What you would like to see as a board.
Um, we hold off with my motion until, uh, we get it done?
Well, let me just get the. Yeah. Should we just put Bruce in there?
Not, I have to pretend it's like, it had to exceed, uh.
Yep.
Had to exceed the bid amount.
Do we need to put the bid amount in there or just?
Um, I can pull that in from the last board meeting. You have it right there, Thomas? Or you will get it, um, do you want, do you wanna statement in there?
Private cost, uh, uh, two point four, two million four hundred four thousand three seventy-eight. Do that. No, I'm like, that's what it is, that's the total bit, private cost.
Two million four oh four. Sorry.
Well, we get to, I'll watch you hit the wrong keys or whatever you're doing.
I know, right?
Yeah, no, I.
Do you want to make a statement about, um, encouraging, encouraging cost savings deductions?
With all, I like how you said with all, um, impacting the integrity of the project, yes, yes.
Okay. Encouraging cost savings reductions without altering. The integrity of the project. Yep, I spelled that wrong, I'll fix it.
That's worse than typing for a bunch of people.
I know. Okay, so I'm gonna, Director entertained a motion to amend the adoption of the bids. For the bid, for the one bid, multiple. The bid package. Presented at the eleven twenty-three, twenty-twenty-one board meeting to accept the bid. As presented, not to exceed the bid amount of two million four oh four three seventy-eight. Encouraging cost-saving reductions without altering the integrity of the project rather than with deductions. It's really wordy, but does it, does that encompass the will of the board?
Pretty well, Susan.
I think that.
Don't make that one.
That motion from Bruce?
Miranda, take on.
I'll second it.
Second from Megan, any further discussions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye, opposed say no, carry.
All right.
Uh, funding an indoor air quality project.
All right, so then, um, there, there's then only two of these options for discussion. Because two of the options that were presented were to, um, fund the project that was reduced, okay? So there's two options that are here for discussion. Um, I will invite Jody and, um, I gotta get Adam. Yep, you guys can, give me on up since we put you in the corner.
It's actually worked out great and he didn't move a little bit.
Yes, I know, right, I hope I put that was falling asleep, you might have seen him tapping on it over there, all right.
Hello.
Nope, you can have it.
So I'll do, um, real quick introductions, um, Jody, you probably don't need a lot of introduction, but.
Been around a long time, yes, good to see everyone again. And this is Aaron, and he is one of our newest team members, he previously worked at South St. Paul Schools and South Washington County Schools. So he has a lot of background in finance and working on, uh, the types of projects that you guys are talking about, so.
Financing them, yeah.
We're not on the project side, but we can help with the numbers part.
Good, so, um, just as kind of a, a point of reference, who, who Illers is and what they do for us. There, I look at them kind of like they're our school district's financial advisor, right? So to kind of put it in a simple form, I mean, they're really looking at us as a whole. Knowing what our whole big picture is, giving us guidance as to the best possible way. Along the way, they've, they've had discussion about these projects over the course of time. So that's really why I invited you to come and walk through these options that are here. Um, and so the two that we'll talk through are option number two, which is, um, and we'll walk through that one and option number three. That have the, the full two point four odd million dollars, okay? So do you wanna just start off and lead into, um, option two?
Sure, so option two is a combination, so throughout all the options, there is the nine hundred and seventy-two thousand roughly of the Esser Fund. So that stays constant throughout. This option does, um, use some of your LTFM per pupil funding, or as you guys call it, I think your pay-as-you-go money. To address some of the costs. We do have this set up over a fifteen-year period of time, and I know that's a question that Bruce had. And that was because we were running options at all different amounts, including some that were quite a bit higher. So we were just trying to have kind of a consistent apples-to-apples, but nothing magic about that fifteen-year term, especially on the, um, on this component of the funding. We could certainly go back to the ten-year option, have a little lower interest rate. We commit a little bit more of your funding, um, over that period of time, like twenty-eight percent, but I don't have any concern with that. We, um, you know, don't wanna go above a forty to fifty percent level, that's our general rule of thumb to school districts. Unless you're like a Wadena Deer Creek, who, um, had a, a high school that got wiped out by a tornado. So they have a pretty much brand-new high school facility. They, um, did need a lot of work at their elementary school, but they addressed that through some board-issued, um, LTFM bonds. As well as then, uh, some voter approval money, so they kinda combined those two sources and now their elementary is almost like new again. So they did commit a big portion of their per pupil funding, but knowing that they really didn't have many needs. That's not the case here, you guys have plenty of needs for these funds and most school districts throughout the state have plenty of needs for these funds. So we, again, generally don't recommend going above that forty to fifty percent level. But you certainly aren't at that with this, um, fifteen-year payment schedule, you wouldn't be at that with the ten-year payment schedule. So going back to that ten-year option is definitely, um, it's definitely something that we could do. So then, the third component of it is the, um, the, uh, I think SiteLogic calls it the large projects. But it is a health and safety qualifying program, very limited as to what you can, um, use this financing tool for. So the state put this in place because there are three types of projects that they believe are very important to the health and safety of your students. So it does not require voter approval for that reason, they know that you need to take care of indoor air quality, that's the big thing that you've been talking about here. Um, fire suppression is one, and then the third component is asbestos abatement. So all three of those, only, and only those are the types of things that you could issue these bonds for or do a pay-as-you-go levy for. So most districts, because it's a larger dollar amount and the legislature recognizes that, so they put this bonding component into it. So you'll, you know, lots of districts have issued, um, facilities maintenance bonds. Under, you know, one of those limited uses, um, without voter approval. And sometimes they do a structure similar to what we've, are, have been talking to you about, where we're not increasing taxes, there is a tax impact. But we're keeping it at the level that, um, taxes are at now. Wadena did that, for example, um, Sock Center just issued eighteen million dollars and it was not tax-neutral. It caused a tax increase and they talked with their public about it. They also, right after that, the voters approved a, um, twenty-four, six hundred and fifty million dollar voter approve bond. So they're doing lots of projects there. Kimball did a, um, did an indoor air quality project and they were trying to do something similar to your, to what you're doing. Holding fruit's, um, in the middle of getting approval on their project, they're selling bonds for theirs in January. So it's very common tool, but again, limited to those three components and that was for good reason. The legislature thinks those are important and wants you to have the ability to be able to address those projects without having to go to your voters. So that is the whole point of it. And again, we have that dotted line that we keep track of, which is what, um, the tax rate that the voters, um, had committed to when they approved your bond referendum. So it's just kind of a line in the sand that we continue to show you on these schedules. And I know everybody's kinda used to the fact that the taxes didn't go that high, which is great news. So not that we're trying to get up to that level, but just kind of showing you that again as a, as a point of reference.
Sure. The other piece, I just wanted to kind of walk back and let you know the reason, so this initial schedule. When, when I looked back at how, so this would be funding the entire, um, the entire base of the cost. Using the pay-as-you-go long-term facility maintenance money. This would be using only the large project bonding process for the excess of. So it, it would not have, this is, this is kind of trying to stay true to the integrity of the discussion that I also heard the board have around. Using that long-term facility maintenance money, that is our, our per pupil funding. But then this would, would allow us to maintain some of those funds. And then cover that overage through, um, through the, the large project bonding process.
Yeah, so the, the, um, base project is really financed through Esser and the LTFM per pupil funding. And then the overage, the sticker shock piece of it, as we've been talking about it today, is what this bond issue would cover. So a relatively small bond amount for the, um, for the overall project, the overall two point four million dollar project.
Are we gonna wait with discussion till we're all done?
No, you can.
Discussion in the meantime, okay, specific to this one. We just lost, um, an operating levy. The public in my mind told us that they weren't interested in any more taxes. Um, it wasn't very big compared to what I hear is going, but the public's. The public in my mind told us that they weren't interested in any more taxes, um it wasn't very big compared to what I hear is going, but the public said no. So my question is, and you maybe got some of this information because I tried to send it earlier, so when I look at this one um we're using twenty point seven percent of revenue, when I look at the one we talked about, we as a board um I think agreed with our two options in May. One was the possibility of the health and safety funds, which we now have by a different name, maybe that's the reason. Um, but at the same time, we talked about the grant plus um using the funds that we're talking about. Um, the long or long-term maintenance funds over a period of time, so that was twenty-eight point one percent. Can a a bond run for seventeen years?
Yes, if the it doesn't exceed the useful life of the um assets that you're financing, so.
So the assets that we're putting in, are they more than seventeen years? Okay, so that eliminates that part, so what I did, this is just me, um I took the new interest rate, the original proposal was two percent interest rate, I took this.
That was for the tenure, sorry to interrupt.
That was on the tenure, then it went to two point two five on the fifteen.
Two fifteen.
Assuming it would be two point two five, it could change from.
So it'll be a little higher for seventeen.
Okay, so like what?
Yep, just like a home mortgage, yeah, maybe ten basis points higher, yep.
Okay.
Two thirty-five, maybe.
It looks to me like if we put the revenue of the LTFM um LTFM funds back up to about twenty-eight percent, plus, well, it's nominally different, we could finance the whole project there without having to do health and safety, which is from the public's eyes, all we have done is use the funds that they already allocated to us for a longer period of time to pay for a project that needed to be done with excess costs that we can't control and we're not raising their taxes, and the yellow should go away on that chart.
Yeah, if you choose not to do any um bonding under the health and safety indoor air quality program, the yellow would go away if you're going to only use the per pupil funding. That's correct.
But basically, everything is identical to what we thought about the million eight, we're gonna extend the period of time, we're gonna use about the same um percentage of that that we were using back then, back up to just a hair over twenty-eight percent, and we put the whole works in the project and based on seventeen years, I got one more question, can you prepay on a bond?
You set the call date at the time that you issue the bond, so just like your school building bonds, generally the call date is um probably eight years out now, I would say, so that is when you can, yep, so that's how that works.
That was just a sideline question because I had some other ideas, how to shift it around a little bit, but it doesn't make any difference.
So. One thing, just to, that I'm thinking about is with the health and safety, like being able to use utilize that money. We aren't gonna need it for fire suppression, right, we're not gonna need, what was the other one?
It was asbestos.
A- asbestos statement, yep. So when we look back at last year, we talked a lot about how do we, how are we strategic about the funds we use? So if we don't use those dollars, are we taking away them from the softball field and our options to do other things?
Yes.
That we've also committed to, so then we're gonna be at the, you know, next year at the board meeting, doing the same thing scrambling to find the resources for a project that we've committed to, and that's one of the concerns that that I have is these funds are available for a reason. This this is how schools run, it and so why would we not utilize dollars that are earmarked essentially for a project like this?
And that is why most boards do use that financing tool.
Right.
Because, again, it's pretty limited, this, I mean, you know, the state gives you a lot of rules and they control a lot of what you do, this is one area where they've opened it up for you to access some additional funding, yes, there's a tax impact, um you know, fortunately, you have a structure right now where you can fit it in without causing a tax increase, but yes, there's a tax impact. And and you know, you can, lots of school boards are taking advantage of this financing tool just because nobody gets enough money in that funding formula to cover all their deferred maintenance costs, they just don't. And you can, you know, talk to South St. Paul School District, unless you're in one of the twenty-five big districts that have unlimited access to funds, um you do not have enough money to meet all your needs, so I think that's why people land on, you know, if we've got this financing tool, we can take advantage of it, we're gonna do it so that we don't jeopardize our other needs that we have.
Now, then my, as a taxpayer.
Yeah, yeah, right.
I I have no problem maintaining what I'm being right now, I would probably pay a little more, but I'm different, looking at our community as a whole. We have to go back in the fall and ask for an operating levy that if we don't get, we're gonna be in a real bad situation. Do we feel comfortable saying to the public, you turned down a levy, we increased your taxes, and and even though, to me, they're not increased?
I know.
But that's not what the, I've already heard from the public. And so now we have to go and sell this to the public and say, yeah, we did do that, and and this is why we did it, we still need you to vote again and give us another operating levy, so we have to be comfortable, are we comfortable that we can go back to the public and really sell this? Because we are in a small rural conservative community.
Yeah, and many of these others that we work with are too, so that's no, that's no different, but you know your public better and you know, you know, how they would feel, I mean, operating referendum was an ask for one reason, right? This is a different
Right.
type of cost, and I don't know if that matters.
I'm just saying to the, to the whole, as a whole, that
You guys know that better than we do. Yeah, right.
You know, if we go this route, we have to be prepared to go to the public and we, we gotta fight for what we need.
Absolutely.
I think either which way, we have to be prepared to go to the public after not having passed a slapshot referendum regardless, I think the public's just not gonna give us referendum without us going to them and educating.
Right.
And and it's just a matter of how much that education goes and 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 how much the people actually pay attention, listen to, again, us being fiscally responsible with funding mechanisms that we have available to us. Because, you know, unless we're gonna drop the softball fields again, drop the track, because track's gonna have to be replaced, roofs are gonna have to get done, things are gonna have to get done. And we can go to long-term facility maintenance large projects to get those things done.
No.
So so you, are we gonna go to the public for uh, you know, a a building, a a bond, you know, like to get these other projects done, I don't see us doing that either, not on top of the operating referendum and everything else, so you know, I I understand and respect that it's still gonna be a conversation, it's still gonna be a hard-hitting point, and and the fact that we're utilizing funding mechanisms that are available to us without making a tax impact on what they're currently paying today I feel is, to a point, more responsible of us.
And to kind of piggyback off of Thomas too, is we can, this is a, this was and is an important area for our community, the indoor air quality in our elementary school, so we can go back and say, you know, here, we did what you guys had asked us to do by doing the indoor air quality, and we used funding that was available that kept us so that we could still do our maintenance.
And I think that, I mean, going back to that, yes, it is a task tax impact, and I'm not trying to minimize that, but again, there's a reason that those funds are available is because who wants to spend this type of money on indoor air quality that you're never gonna see? Right, it's something that you don't really see, fire suppression, you don't really see it, it's not like a new gym floor or something, you know, high-tech. So we would have districts that could never have good quality indoor or indoor air quality if their taxpayers are like, I don't wanna pay for that.
Right.
Because they're not interested in it, and that's why this funding is available for districts that do struggle to fix things that actually need to be fixed, and it's very specific because they're high-cost projects.
Correct, the other piece I do just wanna, because this this does still allocate a portion of the LTFM pay-as-you-go money. So this is acknowledging that there is a portion, and it actually is, if if this was funded at the one point eight five, it would have been no there would have been no additional money put into the large project, the health and safety money, um so this is the the ball, the the sticker of shock, that's all, that's the portion that's put into that, not the whole project. So I do, I I think that that's also something that the board wants to think about, is this does take that that health and safety pay it, or that the long-term facility maintenance pay-as-you-go or per pupil funding that we get and and putting twenty percent of that toward this fund, so it is, it is going to um the the next steps would be the facility committee coming back and taking a look at now with the remaining funds, how are we gonna do what we've talked about doing? So it, I mean, it is, it's going to change that discussion.
But one of the parts for what you're talking about in the facility maintenance, with the football field and the softball field, you can bond for that, you can go ask the public for it. The only reason that you're, we we would reserve that is because something you can do without asking the public for it. So it's doesn't take it out of the picture, so if you've got four years down the road and you wanna spend a million three um like was in the proposal that I saw from the last meeting, fine, go to the public and ask them. I have no trouble going to the public and asking, at this point in time, they shut off for operating levy because they didn't want more money. But if we're basing our decision on moving forward to tax them today on a tax that we can do based upon keeping funds aside because we can spend that money without asking them, I'm not sure that works for most people, it doesn't work for me. I think we need to be very straightforward, we also have roofs, and that's gonna compensate for most of that.
Yep.
Because I see no way we're not gonna go back and ask for the football field and all that anyway. Well, if they can show the public why we would do that, there's no reason you couldn't bond for that.
And then I think we have to be comfortable with, they might say no to that, and we've been telling our girls softball for years, this is gonna get addressed. So we'd have to be comfortable with, we're gonna take that risk of people saying, no, you have, not understanding you have this big facility, again, the track, well, how come a track costs that much? Right, people don't necessarily understand.
So when Bob Hewitt left.
So we just, we're kicking it down the road again, instead of saying we have this money available that we wanna use, and if you could remind me, not to put you on the spot, but what was the difference, like on the average, I think our average home is a hundred and seventy-some thousand? What was the av- or the difference, or sorry, what was the taxable amount?
A hundred uh for which?
Sorry to put you on on the spot, but between the two, you know, there were the charts were saying, okay, if we were to, you know, do the million five, what would that?
You mean, what does that yellow little bar represent?
Yes, yes, that's the better question.
That's a dollar.
Sorry, and if you don't know, that's okay.
Yeah, I can, I can get that to you guys.
But it's not a big difference.
It is not, right.
Like, we're not talking like hundreds of dollars.
No.
The operating levy wasn't a whole lot of money.
Right.
Okay, it didn't pass.
Right.
Public said no, and a few weeks later, we're turning around and we're gonna pull the taxes on it.
But we can bring this, we go a few weeks later, a few weeks, this was going to come in front of the board, whether the operating referendum passed or not, we started talking about this in twenty nineteen.
At a million, at a million eight in May.
It's it.
At a million eight in May.
Yes, yeah.
Okay, a lot of things have changed within the last month.
But one thing that hasn't changed is the timing of when this got brought in front of the public, yes, it's unfortunate timing, I'm sorry to everybody that's to understand and hear the fact that we had unfortunate timing with that meeting, right after the bond referendum, maybe we should have waited a few months, but guess what, then we would have had new bids and we've been ten percent higher. Yes, it's unfortunate timing, but it was, it was a timing because that's when we need to get to project times, we needed to get the bids in, the bids opened up, we have to get that moved forward and and approved. It 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 sucks, it was unfortunate timing, but we need to get over the fact that that timing was when the timing was.
But the risk of using long-term maintenance funds that are already there, extending the bond out a little bit further two years further, taking the same percentage out of the long-term maintenance funds that we were gonna take out and based upon a different number in May um as compared to not doing it so we can use that money for um the football field and all of that, I'm not sure that mixes together.
But that always.
When you said it's an approved thing of the school board, we have just talked about it. We all agreed to approve the one point eight, we have just talked about our options out there, um we have some drives, and I'm not on those committees, but I don't recall coming through the school board that we approved those at this point, it's something we're looking at.
No, like the the projects are built in the plan.
But there, there is, there has been for the last seven years conversations of the softball field, getting softball fields being upgraded.
Ten years ago.
There's, we've just started in the last year conversations of the track needing to be replaced, now what that timeline is, that's gonna be something where eventually it will need to be done, it's not a we're trying to make a nice glorious track here because we're choosing to, it's going to have to be done or we don't have a track team. Uh, our football field needs to be re-crowned at the least, and if we're gonna do the track, might as well re-crown the football field. We have sprinkler issues and whatnot, things that need to get done that we're gonna have to spend money on, and that's gonna have to come out of long-term facility maintenance. Is what the, we catch.
Not necessarily we can bond for it.
To Maggie's point, then that's the risk you just wanna make sure that that's.
We have to go to the public to bond. To bond, we're gonna ask the public that we need to replace the track and I say no, then we turn around and say, start tracking, we don't have a track.
We have to bond, we have to ask the public for an operating levy, we have to ask the public for a tech levy, and we're gonna saddle them with a half a million dollars right now on their taxes if we do the health and safety. We're three years, four years down the way, I can't remember what year you had set that, doesn't mean we can't put it together and ask the public what they should we be doing it if the public doesn't agree with the track and the football field and and the softball field? I don't really, I know I'm trying to find this, but when we were, when Bob Hewitt left, we were assured that was two hundred and fifty thousand dollars already sitting aside for doing the softball field, I have been on the softball field for a long time, it's gone, so where did that go? Did anybody else remember that? I don't know if you were on the board, Rick, but I remember specifically it came up, we were looking for the money, and so we had money set aside um for that, I don't, where's that?
That's exactly to my point. That, that's what my fear is, we're gonna keep kicking it down the road and it's gonna get utilized for something else, and I don't know that I'm willing to take that risk continually, like, well, we're gonna have to go ask the public for that, now that may be kicked down another five or ten years down the road. Because it is earmarked and then, you know, it has to get spent on something else because something became a hotter, different priority, but I think that is I'm exactly concerned about that.
And again, I look at our roofs, I look at our track, I look at regular maintenance that's gonna have to take place within this school district, that's not, shouldn't be a bondable question.
Right.
We shouldn't go to our public and say, we got really bad roofs and our track needs to be replaced this year, it's gonna cost us two million dollars to do all that. Will you give us two million dollars? And that's not a bondable question, we have to fix our roof, we have to fix our track, we have to, we have to do certain things, yeah, maybe the softball fields don't have to be done. But there are things, maintenance-wise, that have to be done, and we have seventeen years to hopefully we don't have to do those, I don't think so. And that's my my biggest concern with doing the full, you know, the full project at least off of our long-term facility maintenance, is we're hand, potentially handcuffing us from projects that we have to do, because then we're handcuffing future boards. You have an issue, you're gonna need to take care, take care of it, oh, sorry, the board eight years ago bonded against your long-term facility maintenance, you can't, you don't have the money to do it right now. That's, that's the handcuff that I'm concerned about. And that's a handcuff that I think our community should be concerned about.
If if we earmark a certain percentage from our LTFM dollars towards this without bonding, can we add a later date since that's earmarked and put down on paper that that is earmarked for this, can we later bond for that money?
Well, that, I think what you're, that's just a.
They're not.
No, no, because you, I mean, then you wanna be replenishing your other LTFM, no, I don't think we could.
It can't be done?
Yeah.
Okay.
No, because you wouldn't have any cost to apply it against then, I mean, you wouldn't have any qualifying cost to apply it against then, you know, you um certainly if you were bonding for deferred maintenance projects and wanted to bond for more deferred maintenance projects in the future, you can definitely do that. Or if you've paid for some costs and you have reimbursement resolution in place, there's ways to cover those costs um later, but.
And one thing too, I mean, Bruce, I agree with almost everything you're saying, these are, I'm concerned about all of that. And public's perception obviously does matter, this is our community, but we are tasked with serving our students, and that is our mission, and who's representing the track team, who's representing the softball team, who's representing the football team? And gym class and all those other things, like, does their, like, wants and needs, like, needs? Are they less than what the community's perception is? I mean, this is the tough thing, we have to make these decisions, it's tough. Like you said, timing, awful, I get that, but we still have to look back at what is our mission, what does our strategic plan say, what did we say we were gonna do? And we have talked, when Matt was here, we talked about utilizing these funds and using the funds that are available, you know, to be fiscally responsible. You know, I guess that's where I'm kind of, where I'm at is it's not just the public's perception, like, I'm here standing up for our students. You know, and I don't want their voice or what they need to be lost in the conversation, I guess. So if we could say, yep, look at the softball team, look at the track team, look at the football, look at all of them, say, yep, this might not happen for another ten years, if we're, are we comfortable with that?
I don't think that's fair comparison. Um all you're you're associating getting those done with what the public can't vote on.
We do stuff all the time that the public doesn't vote on.
We we voted, we voted to build a brand-new addition on there, so I understand that, but associating it with that you're going against a certain faction or a certain group of people, I don't see that association. But I think we could be at a stalemate here. Everybody has their minds made up.
Just a reminder, if we don't pass the operating levy next year, forget the softball field, forget everything else.
Yeah. It's on the road, cause it's all over with.
That's what's here to be more than anything.
The public answer to some of that. So I think the decision here is where everybody's at on this. I think um we could make a motion.
Well, I I would like to see if anybody else is comfortable in in like sharing their feedback. I feel like I've been talking a lot.
And if you're not as vocal.
What I would like to hear from more board members, if possible, if you want to speak.
On the project, yeah.
If not, that's okay too. I just wanna make sure everybody has a chance.
Uh but I've already said, I have no problem maintaining my task where they are, but you know, and I just hope that we can. I just get more concerned about the operating levy than anything else, and I just don't wanna put anything in the way. But whatever we do, we need to be ready to back it up and to fight for it to make sure we get the operating levy passed next fall, or none of the rest of this that we're talking about means anything. So, yeah, we uh, I have no problem with, I would prefer that we don't have to put the perception out there that we've increased taxes or whatever we call it. But if that's what we have to do, as long as we can maintain people where they're at, then at least I feel comfortable with that.
But if I'm understanding this correctly, no matter which option we pick, we would not be increasing their taxes.
Correct. They would be sustained.
They would be sustained or.
Yeah.
But.
There would be a tax impact. That's the word.
There is a tax, there is an impact, it's not an increase.
An increase. I might say.
Otherwise, your taxes will go down.
Yep.
Yeah, I I think I said it wrong earlier, but it's the impact thing.
Kind of, yeah, it's kind of similar to when you do a renewal. I mean, when people talk about an operating referendum renewal, there's many taxpayers, when we go around to the public meetings, that say, well, yeah, but if I vote no, then I'm just gonna get a tax decrease, right? And it's true, yeah. If you don't renew the operating referendum, and that's an option for next year, yes.
Or maybe I should vote yes on the operating levy because my taxes are going down. Anyway. So if we didn't have that on there, the taxes were gonna go down, operating levy is really important to us. If we can say, okay, from our long-range planning, your taxes are going down in a couple of years, based upon what we have done, we really need that operating levy.
And I, you know, I I do, I understand, but I I just feared that we really need our long-term facility maintenance dollars too.
And I don't disagree. I would just taken percentages that we talked about. The difference would be the the amount of years.
Janelle, can I put you on the spot?
Sure.
I feel like I'm putting everyone on the spot. From your perspective of looking at the long-range budget, the needs that the school has, that, you know, Steve, that you've talked about,
Yeah.
where are you at in tying up those dollars?
Yeah, Janelle has that down pretty good, but there's lots of needs.
Yeah.
Yeah, I I think what I I feel comfortable with is I I do feel comfortable using our long-term facility maintenance pay-as-you-go as it was presented. I feel like the one thing that's different, and I've heard the discussion about the concern of of using a bond opportunity that's that's there for us and it's granted to school boards without a voter approval. I I hear that, I absolutely do. What is different in my mind about this is we've come back, kinda to your point, Megan, where we've um we tried really hard, or maybe it was you, Rick, I'm sorry, whichever one you give, it was that direction. We tried really hard to be very responsive in this project, to keep it in that that one, the the um one point eight five million that came forward, and we tried, we looked at that as a, and 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 we talked about those options. So when I look at, if we can do this using long-term facility maintenance, it is going to tighten that plan that we have. It is absolutely going to impact that. And I think it, I also honor that it does impact the the, it takes away a tax reduction to maintaining tax steady by using the the um long, the health and safety process. I still feel like that's the best option for our district. I I I did cost out what the, what we had talked about um before about funding the whole piece through long-term facility maintenance, large project, health, safety. We don't even have to talk about it. I get it. And and I very much understand the pushback and the hesitation. When we talked as a, when you guys talked as a board a couple of months ago, that was the option that I explored because that was what I heard. That's not where we are today. So where I feel comfort, the most comfortable with with option two, so that we can still sustain, and I do understand the volatility of our vote, right? And I think that that's also part of why I'm concerned about tying up such a huge portion of our funds that are gonna leave our district in a position where we don't have a softball team because we don't have a softball field that's that's adequate, where we don't have a track because, a track team because we don't have a track that's adequate, right? I do realize that that's, those are some some issues that I I wanna be cognizant of as well. I think we've we've developed a really solid schedule for our roofs. I think we'll make it a couple more years. Um but we're gonna have a a three hundred and seventy thousand dollar roofing project that's coming up. We've also talked about, you know, some renovations of a science lab. We've got some really cool educational components that we are moving forward with, that that's what our kids are here for, right? And I I know that those are all part of that plan, that those are all the moving pieces beyond only a softball field, beyond a track. It's it's more than just those pieces. So I, where I sit is I feel comfortable with option two.
Do we feel, so using, if we did use up the dollars, how confident, I mean, this is a tough question. Are we that we would be able to do phase three that we've been talking about, you know, we're going, phase one was the PAC and all that, phase two, that we would actually be able to do that, you know, within a year or two?
Phase three, the complex, if we use all LTFM dollars to fund the project?
How would that impact the next phase that we?
It won't happen.
Okay.
Yeah, we just, there wouldn't be. I I don't, I don't see how that could happen, very any, yeah.
Somebody can make a motion. Somebody, all I need for to make a pass.
Question is, is a motion, but I mean.
Well.
Yeah.
So if we do option two, then like you were saying, maybe phase two of the whole big picture is gone. Am I understanding that correctly?
It'll impact the timing for certain.
So do you think, Bruce, in your opinion, cause you do, you have a lot of great relationships and you do get a lot of feedback, do you think public, including our students, teachers, staff, would, like that's, would they look back and go, why didn't you utilize that money? Cause now this next part of the project is so far down.
Excuse me, I'm gonna accept a citation.
Oh, sorry. Do you remember, you remember asking, like, from your perspective, would they say, we're so glad that you didn't keep our tax impact, that it was reduced, and that this next project now was pushed out, like, would that sit well with everybody? Not everybody, cause that's not fair statement.
I would say it would sit well with the many of the people, thank you, and many of the people that voted no on our operating levy. I've always been a stickler on operating levy. I'm, Rick and I probably agree with that on a hundred percent.
I don't think there's a single board member here that's not concerned about our operating levy with or without passing.
We absolutely.
Well, we just lost.
Right.
Yeah, and we lost.
Right. But we're making an assumption, it's a different thing, it's different dollars, and we're making an assumption that all the people who voted no on the operating referendum, that they wouldn't want us to utilize these dollars in this way. Like, we're making a lot of assumptions about their vote.
Wait, and and you know, what's, how have we educated, you know, how have we educated them and how will we continue to educate them about not only the operating referendum, the importance of it, and why we're asking for what we're asking, but then also why we're also deciding, making decisions uh financially, the way we're making decisions. Like, what has been our education to them, to the public? What have they, you know, do they understand why we're making decisions that we're making? You know, that's.
And I sense it, like, I I feel like our board, I mean, things have changed. The operating referendum didn't pass, and we've kind of moved into scarcity mentality of fear of what's gonna happen. And so we're, you know, are we making again long-term decisions that are they, are are strategic? Like, is this the most strategic thing to do to tie up our long-term facility maintenance dollars? The good part is, it doesn't, you know, the taxpayers' doc or impact goes down. But is that in the best interest of the school district? And I I don't know, I don't know that all those no votes would say that. I mean, I don't know. Either way, like, Rick, you said, it's, we're gonna have a lot of education to do within our community.
Well, I still go back to last vote, that it it could have, we just didn't take it seriously. I I didn't take it seriously enough. We assumed.
Yep, I think there was a lot, a lot of ways.
And I think next time, there's gonna be, we're gonna have to go door to door to door if we're really serious about getting it passed, but when we do that, we're gonna have to also back up whatever other decision we've made, cause people will have questions.
Absolutely.
Yep, yep. And I think, and 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 to that point, uh one of the things about this option that I really do feel like it takes the the initial project that was talked about, and it funds it without any implication from a tax perspective. It funds it entirely based on the district's use of their pay-as-you-go funding. The the caveat that is different is where we are based on the industry and based on where those bids came in. That's that difference. So that's the piece that is applied to that health and safety bonding process. It's not sending the whole project through using health and safety money. It's, in my opinion, it's, the board is making a concerted effort to use the funds that we have. It's going to be a struggle to, like, we're gonna have to, that facilities committee is gonna have to come together, and it's gonna get real, right? Like, okay. Phase three might turn into phase three A, B, C, one, two, three, you know? For real, it might be broken apart, and how does that work? But I feel like what what I hear the board doing is trying to vet out the best decision to have the least impact in the perception of the of the voters, understanding that into consideration what those hesitations and concerns are, and making a decision for the board in a long-term process. So I think it does, it does do two, both of those things.
I'm gonna ask you another question, Bruce. Do you think that if we did, you know, use up the long-term facility maintenance dollars, do you think that that would help change people's vote to yes? Is that what you're thinking for?
I would think it will make a lot of difference if we don't tax them um between now and then. It would say that we are fixing a project the best we possibly can without impact to the taxpayers, knowing farewell that we have another operating levy coming up, and we lost the last one.
But we may have to potentially impact um her future needs of the district without their thing, or what they're saying, and then they don't, then they don't say it, and then we don't improve it. That's that's the other flip side of that caveat. It's a part that I think everybody, public, the public needs to understand. That is the other option. Yes, we we didn't tax you now, but we're gonna have to later.
It gets hard to communicate, probably. That's what's hard. We got a social media, we got this, we got that, we have the newspaper, I'm not sure what the readership is anymore.
It does, it does.
I agree.
How how do we get to them? Now, we talked about it um when we first started to talk about the operating levy of sending something out to everybody. Cause one thing the public told us, when we sent everybody the survey, we had lots of good responses that they got, right? And guess what we had? We had social media, we had the newspaper, we had all these other communication sources, but we elected not to do that. Um I think it was a.
We sent all we sent.
Last, I've read, we've cut that.
Yeah, but it was more of a complete um information packet. It was just a summary that we sent. But at the same time.
Some people didn't get that in the mailbox after election day.
Yeah, man, I mean, I don't know, I'm how all that would work, but I know when they got that survey, we got some interesting thing. I love public surveys. Today, we're struggling with what people think. Our issue is, since this arose um with the higher bid and loss of the 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 referendum, we don't have time to get a survey from the public to find out where they're at. I have a feeling they would tell us where they're at. But I talk to the people, I talk to, you talk to different people, you talk to different people, all of us are talking to different people. Where are they at? Look at what's happening out there. Anything that you hear in the news, does it sound like your costs are going down? Their cost of living are not going down. I mean, for that person that's not even active, has a vote in the community, they're gonna look at it um at their cost of living. There's nothing indicated anywhere today that it's going down. So they know how to plan, cause they have to plan for their budgets. I I think it has impact of how we do that.
I have an answer to the yellow box.
Oh, okay.
Go back to that.
Yep, yep, sure.
Texting. Gotta, didn't mean to put you on the spot. Person behind the curtain, back at the office, great. Yeah, the wizard is back at the office. So in taxes table twenty-five, that step down, that yellow box is nineteen dollars on a hundred and fifty thousand dollar home.
For the year.
For the year.
For the year.
Yeah, 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 nineteen for the year, so less than two dollars a month.
Nineteen dollars.
For a hundred and fifty thousand?
At a hundred and fifty thousand dollar home, yep.
I mean, when you put it in, to me, do we, do those people nineteen dollars?
In twenty twenty-five.
In twenty twenty-five.
Yeah.
Um I guess, what was the impact? I don't have it right on me, was a hundred and fifty thousand dollar house impact um on operating levy? You have an answer right there. I I don't know what it was.
Tax impact of that. I'll get it. I I know your point, Bruce.
Janelle, can I, all right, I just have to say something here, that we we just need every penny we can get for LTFM projects, the facility maintenance projects is what it is, and if we have a resource to to use this extra funding on right now, it, I I just wanted, I needed to say that or something. We need as much LTFM dollars as we can get. There's many things in this district that is gonna benefit students in the future, not necessarily softball related and 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 sports related, but just facility-wise that that I know that are coming up, and we need, we need the money in in LTFM.
Yeah, and that's what we hear. And again, that's why, you know, each board has done something different. I'm just saying, you guys know your community best. Each talked to different people, as Bruce said, but I think overall, that's kind of where the other boards have landed, and they've all taken a different approach from SOC Center, who, you know, talked to their community and explained it, and they still passed a bond referendum, you guys, of twenty-six million four hundred fifty thousand shortly after they did that eighteen million dollar board-approved bond. So, and I think they're a pretty conservative community too, but they worked really hard on communication. And I know it was a huge effort, and I don't discount that at all, but it it does take, it's hard to get people's attention right now. I think that's the other thing. Um you can try all the different types of communication, and still some people don't feel like they're informed, but there's so much you can do, but. there's so much you can do, but um, I know that, I know they did work very, very, very hard on the communication piece of it.
We just need more funding.
I know.
We need more.
Problem is, this is frustrating that we're fighting for crumbs, like.
You're talking about.
I know.
Like.
We also need an operating levy, and all of it's gonna come to a screeching halt in our stuff if we don't get that.
Right.
So when I put a priority on something, that falls at the top of my list. Not that I'm discriminating against somebody, the track team or anybody else. If you don't get the operating levy, we don't exist. We could still end up using a fair amount of our um, reserve fund as long as we have to wait for that thing. So, but we don't have it today, and the public said no. Did you find that number by chance?
I was, I paused, because I was.
Anyway, I think that's probably, I'm kind of guessing they're pretty similar numbers.
But you're, you're also making an assumption that that people will say yes next year to the operating referendum because we decided to use up our LTFM dollars.
I can't then, I can't make that assumption.
But you are.
Like, you're, you're, you're making the other stuff.
I can make, I can make the assumption that it shouldn't get any worse than it is today. We didn't have this, and he turned us down, okay? If we, if we add it to their taxes, I think we'll be better than adding it to their taxes. Whether they're gonna vote yes next year or not, I can't tell you that. How many more things may come up? I don't know if few costs are going to four bucks, I don't know if the groceries are going up twenty-two bucks, I don't know.
So, that's the potential of handcuffing our LTFM and still not passing the operating referendum next year exists.
And I agree with those.
It can.
That that exists.
Yep.
Just as much as you're seeing not handcuffing our LTFM and not passing it exists. It has that same potential.
Prior, yep, if that's what happens to prioritize operating levy, I'm there.
Right, but.
And I know there's repercussions that will happen from it.
But you're, you're, how you're, I'm trying to understand that a decision to not use our LTFM dollars doesn't mean the operating referendum isn't a priority. Because if that is, then again, we're saying that this is conditional, like people vote yes for it if we don't do this. Do you see what I'm saying? Like, no one here is saying the operating referendum is not a priority. It absolutely is, it's the timing of it.
Yeah, I think what what happens is we can go back and forth on this forever. You have an option number two there. If everybody's leaning that direction, you have a motion, I'd request that we have a a roll call.
There's a, there would be a resolution, so it would go.
Yeah, if if.
Yeah, and you can decide what you wanna do.
Bruce, um, I did, Bruce, on, in the ref, the operating referendum for a hundred and fifty thousand dollar house, it was a hundred and forty-three dollars a year.
And this was nineteen bucks.
Nineteen dollars a year.
Okay, I I'll just, I was the one at the last meeting that asked if there wasn't some way we couldn't divide the LTF and the health and safety. And you came back with a way of doing that, because before we weren't talking that way. So we have divided it, um, so thank you for that. And since we've gotten to that point, I will make the motion that we accept resolution, resolution for option two.
I'll second. Yeah, the motion from Rick and a second from Jake on option number two. Brandon, when you're ready, we'll do a roll call. Take your time, I know you just got back in there.
Bruce.
Nay.
Thomas.
Nay.
Maggie.
Aye.
Cheryl.
Aye.
Diane.
Aye.
Rick.
Aye.
Jake.
Aye.
So we have a motion, a second and passage of res, uh, not option number two, resolution. And that is splitting our long-term facility maintenance at nine twenty-five and our facilities large project five sixty. We'll go on to G, World's Best Workforce.
Thank you.
Okay, that's okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, yep, you're welcome, you guys. Happy holidays.
Hey, you too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
First. Yes.
You go first, Angela.
Don, you're a trooper.
Oh.
You couldn't have put her up earlier in the agenda?
I don't know.
I know, I was like, oh, is this employee or not employee?
I have. I don't have anything controversial to say.
So here's a couple of, there's a couple of copies, um.
You want to cast it?
I will cast it, yep.
Okay.
Yep, I will.
So, first off, the World's Best Workforce public meeting that we need to have, you know, is going to be part of today. It's just mainly informational for you. Um, the report is due to the, um, due to MDE tomorrow, so we still do have time to make some revisions, but it's basically just data preparation. Um, we've met with the World's Best Workforce Committee, um, in November, I believe it was November twenty-first. And in looking at that, one of the things that we had discussed is we've kind of used this as jumping through screens in the past and not really made the movement towards what the purpose is, so if you go to the next one, that would be great. So, that's okay. Purpose of the World's Best Workforce, um, reports and plans are to ensure that every school district has a plan to meet goals that are gonna be similar for everybody across the state. And one of the things that we've done, and as a board you've done an extremely good job with, is putting together a strategic plan that has some action steps to get to where we need to be. Our next step is taking just data collection and putting it together and making it work well, so that we're moving in the right direction. And as I said in the last point there, we need to make sure that in January, when we meet, and Maggie's on the committee, Cheryl's on the committee.
Bruce is on the committee.
Bruce is on the committee, and I think he was gone that day, is looking at what our why is. And we've already established our why on our strategic plan, and now we have to figure out how we implement our why.
Sorry?
All right, so there are, there are several parts to this plan that we have to turn in. The first one makes, is with equitable access to effective and diverse teachers. So with looking at that, they wanna make sure all of our teaching, teachers are in, teaching in a licensed area, so we have some expertise as far as what's there. They look at that as having our licensure and then having experience. Um, for last year, because this report goes back to one year, seven of our teachers out of the seventy-five point five um, FTEs had three or three or fewer years of experience. What we do to ensure that they're going to come along and understand the processes that are used and and some of those things that they don't teach you in college, um, are we, we have a pretty good mentorship program that is in place, that we look at it. The part that Haynesville and every other small rural school runs into is we're getting a bit more diversity in our student population. They want our teacher population to reflect our our student population, and we've tried. We have tried advertising in different spots, we have tried other things. But there's not a lot of draw for us to get that ethnically diverse population to come here and teach. So if you've got any ideas on how we can do that, let us know. But right now, we're making our best movement towards that. Um, if you look at it, eight percent comes out to be just short of five teachers that would have to have, identify as ethnically diverse. We don't have that in Haynesville, okay? That's the part that affects the district as far as providing services. The next five areas, go ahead here, are going to be how we measure what we're doing for students. So there's five areas that are listed for every school across the state to come up with. They want all children ready for school. That says that they're ready and able to participate fully in kindergarten, okay? We look at all, third graders can read at grade level, um, that's our, read well by third grade. Achievement gaps are closed, that's gonna say we have, that's the one where we have, this is our identified group and our non-identified group, which makes it really strange when we had girls and boys as the group. It was boys as our gap group and non-boys as our other group. Students ready for career in college, um, is gonna fall in there, and all students graduate from high school. And if you look at just those five goals that we have to address in this report, it falls right in line with our strategic plan. You can go boom, 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 we've discussed that, and we've looked at it. So this is our report to this, to the state that says, here's what we have. We have our measurements that come in on the Minnesota Report Card and Minnesota Star Accountability System that is being a little wonky right now, but we'll go there. Um, I'm not gonna spend a ton of time on each of them, because you have those in front of you, but I'll give you kind of a brief overview. So if we go to all children ready for school, one of the things that we've looked at is that we want all of our students to be, um, go through our screening program. We had a hundred percent by six weeks into the school year that had gone through the screening program. We have it set up so that we've got periodic screening, so it's not just a one-shot time if parents can't come in. And then we also look at it that we have a great preschool program that we have seen our preschool teachers and our kindergarten teachers and our early elementary, our primary primary elementary teachers have gone. Since our preschool, our preschool threes and our preschool fours, we have seen so much more identification. So we don't have that student that comes in and we go, oh my goodness, what are we going to do here? So everything that we've done through preschool, adding that threes program, and Matt can talk to that. We've looked at numbers and it's growing and growing, and I think you had a waiting list again this year, didn't you, Matt?
Yeah.
Okay, so that's helping us to meet this goal, and we're right on track for that one. Next one, um, all third graders can read at grade level. This one, if you look at the chart, we're looking at our scores going down on the MCA tests. In two thousand and twenty, it was not applicable, because that was our COVID year that we didn't take the tests. Last year, our scores dropped again, but we didn't know until about six weeks before we gave the test that we were gonna have to give them. We were told, no, you're not gonna have to, maybe you will, and we had lots of variables that came into that. So what we're looking at is point two, that's gonna be the biggest one on the right-hand side. We're looking at, instead of taking that one-shot test, one day, one time to take it, taking Fastbridge data that we're collecting, and we've been in that process for three years now, so we will have enough baseline data to use that instead of MCAs as we look into the next years. Um, we also have RTI program and MTSS that are looking at those early interventions that we're gonna find there. And then the letters training that is going on in the elementary and middle schools this year, looking at the training for the teachers this year and the implementation, and it's going to help our overall English, English language arts programs, plus getting those emphasis on those consistent ways that we deliver those skills for reading. Because we all know that if we work for somebody else and and a teacher, you kind of have your students that they're working for you. I'm gonna do things very differently than Janelle might do things. And if you're not consistent with it, you kind of throw that wrench in the whole process. Next one, please. Achievement gaps, ours are, our biggest group, um, is between our free and reduced population and our non-free and reduced. One of the things that you're gonna find if you look for the non-free and reduced, um, numbers in math or reading, you won't be able to go to Minnesota State Report Card and find those specific numbers, because it gives you a total number of students tested, total number that were proficient. And then you can look at taking, so you have to do a little bit of manipulation to get it, so that you are disaggregating that data. Um, just like every other school in the state, in the nation, we're seeing that COVID probably was one of those big things that said, here's the inequity that we're finding. Do we have internet? Do we have parents that are at home? Do we have that assistance that we can give to kids? It continues over even though we're in person, because if mom and dad are at work and you have an older brother or sister that has to get the, their younger brothers and sisters fed and taken care of and everything else. So we can handle those things and as far as understanding that those are problems. And one of the things that we have to realize is if it's good for our students that are free and reduced, it's good for all students. The problem that comes in is our non-free and reduced students will probably progress faster, so that gap will go like this, instead of free and reduced going here and then coming back. And if you've got a, if you've got a solution to that problem, we can make millions of dollars and we can pay for everything. So if you've got that covered and taken care of, let us know, we'll figure it out and we'll make lots of money. All right, next one, please. Uh, where's four?
Four, six, and none.
Oh, there.
Could you change them?
Nope.
Okay, all right, all students are ready for career in college. Um, we're gonna get rid of, in the year to come, we're gonna get rid of the eighth grade MCA test as being a benchmark for it. It has been a predictor that's been looked at. We also are looking at those eleventh graders taking the ACT. It was set up that it started out in Minnesota, that all eleventh graders were gonna take it, that it became an option to opt out, and then it was, now that it is, you can choose to take it. And more and more students are choosing not to take the ACTs because of the fact that many schools are not requiring a standardized entrance exam test like the ACTs or the SATs. Some of the things that we are looking at, as far as kind of bringing that into some, some measurements that you'll probably see next year, is using the, um, MCIS system, which is Minnesota Career Information System, um, that our students have access to, and we can get some of, some of that information as far as what are their goals, what are their plans, all of those types of things. Percentage of students taking classes such as college credit classes, we've got several of them that are offered. Alyssa, how many credits are you gonna be out of here with for college, probably?
Thirty?
About thirty? Yeah, yay, that, you know, mom and dad not having to pay for thirty credits on their pocketbook is is a, is a kind of a, a plume to put in our hat. We can look at some of the classes where our CTE classes, where students can get certification. Um, and like we have our CNA class, I'm sure there were other ones, but as I was trying to figure it out the other night, as my cold was kicking in, I wasn't remembering. Um, and then we need to, we need to look better at sleds, which is, is looking at that post, post here, what are students doing? And we can see how many of them entered, and it's, that's the problem with that one, as far as the information, is it's self-reporting. So students that are entering the workforce right out of high school, students that are going to a two-year school, students that are going to a junior college or to a four-year school, and what are they doing? And then it follows them or tries to follow them and figure out what are they doing two years out, three years out. So we can see, you know, that's one of the things that colleges are talking about right now, is their retention rate of students is very low, because they have, I think I had the statistic that I came up with, is it's over fifty percent that start, don't finish a degree. All right, and now five, all students graduate. Our kids do well, and they they graduate from Haynesville. It is a four-year graduation rate, so the way that is figured out is a student that starts as a ninth grader. We need to track what happens to them, it's not just they're senior year. So if they're with us, and we're the last school that has data on them as far as registration, and they drop out, then they're going to be that percentage that didn't graduate with their class. If they go someplace else and register, then they're, they're going to be taken out of our four-year consortium numbers that are gonna be there. Um, we have periodic meetings with students to ensure that they're on track, give opportunity for credit recovery. Um, and one of the things that we have to realize, we have a small student population. So if we have one student that doesn't graduate, that knocks our percentage pretty quickly. Ninety-seven with the, with seventies, I think it was seventy-six out of seventy-seven students graduated. I didn't get the question, the percentage the same that the state did, but I went with the states, because they're the ones that have the information. All right, so that's the World's Best Workforce portion of this. We also are part of an achievement and integration plan. So when we look at this, um, what you need to be part of an achievement and integration plan is you need to have a racially identified school district that is adjoining to yours. The ones that we are located in in the, in a collaborative with are gonna be Melrose is the one that's next to us, so we can look at that, their population has enough diversity in it, that there's some funding that's available. It's not a ton of funding, and you have lots of different hoops that you have to jump through. It's called the Lake Lubegon Collaboration. Um, the goals that we put that are specific to Haynesville are to reduce reading proficiency rate gap between free and reduced and non-free and reduced. That goes right back to what we had with our achievement gap, so that falls in very, very quickly and easily. Um, we'll increase enrollment in our preschool programming for families receiving free and reduced meal benefits. Right now, or last year, we were at fifty-three point five percent, the decision was at seventy percent. So trying to get those families to be willing to fill out those pa, that paperwork early. And we have that pride factor that becomes an issue, and some of the, are families that are eligible, but the pride factor getting away, in the way, and not filling that out makes it really difficult, because those are the students that need our preschool programs the most, probably.
Don, I have one quick question.
Yep.
Do you think part of that could be, I know that, and correct me if I'm wrong, but that they have to, um, register online?
They.
And that it's all of a sudden, like, because I know of talking to some preschool or parents that have preschoolers, they made sure that they were looking at their computer when it opened. So I'm wondering if we're missing some of our free and reduced, because they don't have the access.
That might be, I don't think it's a really large number. And the other thing that I do know is over at the elementary school, we have paper packets that if, if any. that if any new families come in, and especially those families that were identifying through the school census information, if they're coming in at all, that's one of the things that's been, I've watched it happen, that it's like, have you filled this out? And no, we don't have access to the computer. Here's a paper copy, and you just bring it back.
No, what I was just saying is that the preschools are full.
Oh.
Before these parents have access to it.
Yeah, and I hear exactly what you're saying. It's the morning session that fills instantly. The, all preschool slots don't fill immediately.
Okay.
That's what people are waiting at their computer, because they want a morning session.
I've been that parent.
I hear.
I bet I'm that parent, too.
Okay.
That's where I just worried that our free and reduced families were missing, because they can't be sitting at their computer.
Yep, I misinterpreted your question, I'm sorry about that.
No, that's okay.
And that's exactly, yeah, that's exactly, because I have had people that are like, can we come and sit in your patio and use your internet? And I'm like, uh-huh, you can, you absolutely can. And then one of the things with the A&amp;I plan that we have to realize is because of the different, different learning models that we had and other schools had and everything else, everything was so topsy-turvy last year with COVID that there were many of the activities that we had planned that we weren't able to carry out or we had to adjust. We had some of the things that were going to be there where we wanted to bring students from all the school districts together, especially the middle schoolers and the high schoolers, to talk about those culturally different activities and culturally diverse things that were going on and cultural awareness. And that's one of the really hard things to do over Zoom, because I can find nineteen hundred ways to avoid showing my face when I want to say something mean. And we found out that there were some kids that were really good about it and others that would click off. And they may have been in a room in their school, it might have been Sock Center, or it might have been in Haynesville, and they were like, you know what, I'm not going to participate with it. So we're hoping that things can be more normalized this year, so we can get some of those things done. It is, I don't know, I didn't look at the budget close enough to know the dollar amount that's associated with it. It's not a ton of money, but it gives us some opportunities so that even though we're at 8%, we're looking at Sock Center or looking at Melrose that they're sitting at about 28%, that we need to have some of that understanding. And that's one of the big pushes that is also coming from MDE, is talking about equity all the way around. And to understand equity, it's not being equal, it's making sure everybody gets what they need. Questions?
Sorry, I dropped my question.
No, that's okay.
Didn't wait for the question slide.
Told you it wasn't going to be very controversial.
Thanks.
Thank you very much.
The, right now, if there's, if there's anything that you saw in there that you think is wrong, we can still go back in and change it. It is the form that we had to send to the, to MDE. When you finish, it's a 100% complete, thank you for your completion, but you can, we still can go in until tomorrow night at 11:59 and make any updates. I don't think I made any mistakes.
No, I think it looks great. You know, I think, I think, can I just add one piece?
Absolutely.
I think that we, we really try to do is, if we are going to be submitting these plans, making sure that they're like, it aligns with what we're doing, and really analyzing the data. That's why I think it's so important to have the shift from, from MCA data to using FAST data, because that's, that's most important of like, real life, this is how our kids are doing. So thank you for, for that work, and I think that's been, that's been beneficial.
And, and in the past, with MCA data, it's that one and done. And we had so many students this year that for one reason or another either opted out because their parents opted out, or because of being on quarantine, or because of the fact that we had students that were being homeschooled and we had to offer it. And the time we offered the test was on a Saturday, and those nine kids and I had no fun on those days. But there was so much that was there. I, looking forward as we're going to be coming into testing season, I think that parents understand that opt-out is always an option now. And I think we're still going to have lots of parents that are going to opt-out, so it's not going to give us a good overview of all of our students anymore. So moving towards FastBridge and for the reading and the math, looking at some of those other things as our measurements is going to make it more realistic for us, and it's going to help us make sure that we align with the strategic plan.
Thank you.
To make a motion to approve the 2021 World's Best Workforce.
Got a motion from, Rick, and a second from Bruce already, sorry I beat you to it. Uh, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Opposed say no, carried. Combining polling places.
Yeah.
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah. Yeah, I will.
All right, Janelle, combining polling places.
Okay, so this is required every December. And so you'll notice that this is the resolution to set the combined polling place for our elections. And it, this is similar to what was on last year, so this is to set the polling place for the Haynesville area center.
So move.
I have a motion from Bruce.
I'll second.
And a second from Cheryl.
This one, they did change their names. I don't know if that's, there's a green rough area center, so I don't know if that's anything that's, how they bring it up, because I don't know if this is a.
If it gets published that way?
That would make sense.
So let's, um. Let me look at the resolution.
I guess it's Haynesville Center.
Yeah.
It's a, so, let's, can we amend the motion to, um, correct?
Yes.
The name, yeah.
The name of the center.
They can amend that.
Um, the address is the same. It is still the location. It would just be, thank you, Matt, for bringing that up.
Yes.
Okay?
Green Rough Area Center.
To the Green Rough Area Center.
All right.
She's taking. Catch. Oh, watch it, somebody else does it to the pinky.
I'm such a bad speller that I hate doing that.
Take a motion to change the name, or what do we?
To include the name change. To include the name change to the Green Rough Center?
Green Rough Areas.
The Green Rough Area Center. I should not type on there, it'll start moving her screen. I was going to just.
Okay, I was going to get that written, right?
Perfect.
Wonderful. Okay? Um, and then what we'll do is print a new resolution with the updated language that gets posted, or with the updated address. Name, name, thank you. Oh, my brain's.
So whenever you're ready, Miranda, we'll call.
Yes.
Uh, Bruce?
Aye.
Uh, Thomas?
Aye.
Maggie?
Aye.
Cheryl?
Aye.
Aye.
Brooke?
Aye. Aye.
Motion passed. First meeting in January.
Uh, so my question is posed from last year. How would the board like to wish that, how would the board wish to conduct the organizational meeting? The first Monday in January is January 3rd. Do you want to schedule an organizational meeting for this date?
I would say so, 6:00 PM.
Yeah.
Okay.
I make a motion.
All right.
So.
Motion from Rick.
Second.
Second from Cheryl. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Opposed say no, carried. January 3rd, 6:00 PM, Boardroom.
Wonderful.
Seniority list.
Uh, so according to the master agreements, each of our master agreements have usually around ratification of their finalized contract. So food service has met all of the timeline indicators and has been posted. So the food, the food service seniority list as presented is accurate to our knowledge based on the posting.
So I'll make a motion.
A motion from Bruce.
I'll second.
Second from Megan. We're running kind of quick now. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no, carried. Okay, non-union contracts.
Um, do you want me to walk through those, or would you like to?
Go for it.
Okay, so we met, the administrative committee met with the, with the, not the director positions. And so, whoa, hang on. Thought it was all being all. All organized by having paper, and now I got my stack of paper all funny, but hang on a sec, I got to get my percentages for you. So we met with, um, we met with Matt and we met with Jonah, and, ah, right here, thank you. And so that I'll just highlight a couple of things. So in the Community Education Director Contract, and both of those are linked in there for you to take a look at. The, one of the things that we did do is acknowledge Mr. Dickhausen's years of service that he has had within the district, and so that was an added component to his contract. So other than that, most of, most of the contracts decide, or most of the language was intact, with the exception of the addition of longevity kind of years of service type of addition to his pay schedule. Any questions about that? Um, and then the Technology Director, probably the biggest thing that you'll notice there is a title of Technology Director. We did feel that that was a more appropriate title for his role. I didn't, we are in January. I'm going to be reviewing with a few, just some of the changes or the updates to job descriptions, and that job description will be one of those that we walk through. But just really, it's a more reflective of his role within, within the district. And then the other thing that that did is that brought his, his contract to a full 260 days versus having some staggered time in there as well. So those are a couple of the highlights, unless there are any changes or any specific pieces of information about those two contracts.
Looking for a motion to approve the non-union contracts as presented. And a motion from Cheryl.
Second.
Second from Bruce. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no, carried. Upcoming meeting schedules.
Okay, you will notice I did put the pending January meeting in there, so I will remove the tentative and put that in as an active as well.
Looks accurate to me.
Okay.
And we will move, now move to close the meeting for the superintendent evaluation at 4:13 PM.
Okay.
Looking for a motion? I think, hearing a motion from Bruce.
Second.
Second from Rick. Any further discussion, all in favor say aye.
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 Opposed say no, carried.
Do we take a recess?
Yeah, I'm ready, I could recess.
I was thinking.
We get to do a summary, do?
Yeah, I got it.
Okay.
I thought we did.
So we have a motion from Megan to.
Second from Cheryl.
Open the meeting at 5:07 PM, and a second from Cheryl.
Are you taking notes from Megan?
I am.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed say no, carried. Um, and just a quick statement of our closed session, we all met as a full board to review the superintendent evaluation with Janelle. And we have agreed that in the near future here, Janelle's going to kind of set up some goals to develop and review across the next year, and I'll meet with her to kind of mutually, you know, look at those goals and, you know, kind of determine what, what we're looking for out of her for the future. So I'm excited to get together with that. Now, now looking for a motion to adjourn. Motion from Rick.
Jake?
Motion from Rick.
Second.
Second from Cheryl, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no, carried. Can we leave our computers and stuff and everything here?
Yes, that's fine.
Okay.
Yep. Oh, it's after five already.